...with AIDS and HIV and so we do not want to hurt people that need it. At the same time, we have to find ways to control it from being abused.
How are other California cities dealing, you should pardon the expression, with the medical marijuana situation? Is anybody getting it right?
Well, everyone has their own approach and every city has a distinct way of managing itself. So, for example, in Oakland, you have a strong city manager's system. And as such, they are able to have a focused, concentrated discretionary measure under one entity, which is the city manager. And with that type of discretion, you have greater, a greater way to control the different departments that are involved. In our case in the city, and I'll be brutally blunt here, it's been difficult to see how a department or a series of departments can coordinate because it does mean added work to some of these departments and it's been rather difficult to get them to a place where we can identify the function so we can have an enforceable ordinance. And that's where I think we need to focus on is what's enforceable and how do we maintain a level of control so that our communities don't suffer because of the inscrupulous actions of some while again maintaining this accessibility for those who are ill.
And presuming you do get a permanent ordinance in place finally, eventually, will your planning and land use committee be able to determine where these dispensaries will be located?
And that's one of our first actions, our first directive in our land use committee this past week is to have the planning department come forth with a citywide map where we can identify all the sensitive uses, the parks, the schools, the childcare centers, the libraries, and start seeing where is it most strategic to allow for these establishments while maintaining accessibility as well as meeting the objective of creating a safer neighborhood for our communities.
And obviously, you've got a task force to help with this entire project. Tell us about that if you would.
Well, we have had an interesting group of stakeholders, stakeholders who have been advocating for accessibility for medical, the medical use of marijuana. We've had folks from our neighborhood councils, we've had people from the various departments, including building and safety, planning, city attorney's office, Department of our Treasury, our police commission. And we have been engaging in a rather intense debate as to, okay, how can we implement this? And so, we're trying to learn from those who are actually doing this and we're trying to understand the realities of how we implement this, given that, you know, we are in an area that we have no experience in. So, how do we make this enforceable? It has been difficult because every department has their own perspective of what they think is best and that's what we need to collapse and formulate and pound away on ordinance that works.
And finally, of course, you've heard the dispensaries being accused of attracting crime, but actually, they've turned out to also be targets of crime, haven't they?
Exactly, and it's a double edged sword. If you don't have the proper security or if you're placed in locations with higher levels of gang activity, let's say, you will be vulnerable, you know, they will become targets. But at the same time, those who abuse this process, we have cases where they're smoking the marijuana outside in the parking lot, down the alley, up the hill from the establishment or in our walkways and creating a lot of consternation and essentially limiting the safety issues and becoming attractive nuisance in how they are bringing in the kind of activity that is not healthy for a neighborhood. And that's what we need to correct and those are the kinds of verbiage that we're trying to put into this ordinance that will help control that.
Well, thank you for the background on all that, District One Council member and of course Chair of the Plumb Committee, Ed Reyes. Thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Mr. Popeye.
Again, the vote of 12 ayes will have the city attorney draft a new interim control ordinance without a hardship exemption until a permanent ordinance is put in place to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3970. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. And on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June 12th, 2009. On behalf of Ted Lynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The city of Los Angeles. When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
I will want emergency.
I have a guy here, my daughter. This is Molly, she's four years old. Her name's Timmy.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think we're nuts if this is light up.
We're heading for a traffic light.
We're here at the 7857, 5521, suspect is in very public, can't hardly hear him, he's in a child market. Suspect is 9558, last seen by 5501, no signs of anything, taking his currency.
7855 Roger.
All units, 7855, we're in pursuit of a 200 suspect, some of the houses are closing the backup. Any area impacted, I wish to have him inside.
7855 Roger.
To protect and deserve.
All units, code four, lift the cabin, suspect.
Standing with our community.
Now, state police department, this warning issued at the neighborhood. A suspect is driving a black Honda Civic.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for, did you?
Yeah.
That's your ride.
They take pride in what they do.
8310 code six on the hour.
When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Plaza upon the vehicle.
Roger. Last night, 2L Plaza upon the ambulance vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
G'day, Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.[494.91]
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2009. We're here in the John F. R. Council Chamber of Room 340, City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome members of the public who have joined us, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, where we broadcast every council meeting and rebroadcast each evening. We're also available two other ways: one through the Internet at lacity.org, where we have streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and we have archived footage of our past council meetings. Also online are our city council agendas, which are available 72 hours in advance, and links to our city departments and services. Finally, you can listen in to the council meetings using your telephone by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in not only to the full council meetings, but any of our committee meetings as well. We have a full agenda today and a full council chamber, so Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cartney, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice Weston, Lane, Garcetti, fourteen members present, and a quorum. Ms. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Weston moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
And Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Parks seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Ms. President, this would need to be time for the flag salute.
Oh, thank you. Colleagues and members of the public, if I can please ask everybody to rise for our Pledge of Allegiance, which we do every Tuesday. And if I could ask Mr. Weston to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston, and if we can go through the items on today's agenda, please.
Items one and two are ordinances, notice for public hearing.
Okay. Do we have cards from the public on one and two?
There are no cards.
All right, we'll go ahead and open and close those public hearings. Anybody wishing to call one or two special? Items one or two, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on those two, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items three through eight are street lighting districts, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on July 7th.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and present the ordinances and continue the hearings till the 7th of July. Next items, please.
Items nine through seventeen are items which public hearings have been held. On item ten, the matter was submitted without recommendation, a motion is required. And on item twelve, there is a recommendation to receive and file that matter.
Okay, if there's no objection to receiving and file twelve, we will do so. Number nine, sorry, ten, is that the one, was it nine that required the motion?
Item ten was submitted without recommendation.
Okay, hold on one sec. So number ten, Mr. Parks?
Ten and eleven, if we could hear them together.
Okay, we'll call this special. And Ms. Han, number seventeen, we'll call special. Any other specials, colleagues?
Nine.
Any other specials? Okay, if not, let's go ahead, then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items eighteen through thirty-nine are items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration. Item eighteen is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that. Ms. Han? We've got seventeen for you.
Yeah, I know. I figured somebody would call nine special, special events motion, so could we reconsider that?
Yeah, let's come back to that after these ones.
Come on, you guys.
We have eighteen through thirty-nine. Got to call it special?
No, no.
Eighteen through thirty-nine?
Yeah, that's the...
Please, anybody wishing to call specials? And do we have cards from the public on any of the eighteen through thirty-nine, please?
Yes, Ms. President, there are cards on thirty, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. And we'll open and close the other public hearings. Mr. Rosenthal? Twenty-nine for Mr. Rosenthal. Are there any other specials, colleagues? On eighteen through thirty-nine, if not, let's take up the balance, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item forty is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold number forty on the desk, please, for our closed session. And let's come back to reconsideration of number nine for Ms. Han. If we can please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, that is back before some reconsider. We'll call that special for Ms. Han, item number nine. If we can take the Commissioner, and then we'll go to public comment. If we can ask the nominee for the Commissioner, Mr. Sales, if you'd like to come on forward. Why don't you sit down here? I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I speak without notes because I've known Mr. Sales for a very long time, and he has a vast and really excellent background, and is very well-suited for the Department of Water and Power, having spent many, many years working at the highest of levels at an energy company, which became Sempra Energy, and working with startups. His business background is extensive, his educational credentials are unparalleled. We are quite fortunate to have a nominee of his caliber. His level of accomplishment is significant, and I know that he will bring great insight to the Commission, ask excellent and probing questions, and ferret out issues that will be of great benefit to the ratepayers and of great benefit to the city as a whole. So I wholeheartedly support him, and I'm not sure if he wants to say a lot or a little, but it would be great for him just to say a few minutes just about his background and why he is very enthusiastic about serving on the Department of Water and Power Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to say anything to the council before our next speaker, Mr. Reyes, about your interest in that position? Congratulations.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Councilman Perry, for those very, very generous remarks. I stand before you today asking for a yes vote on my confirmation. What I'll promise to you is I will do my best to maintain low rates and the highest reliability in the system. I have spent several years working the utility business and would like to bring that knowledge to DWP. Perhaps the most compelling reason for me being here today is that my father, who died a couple of years ago, worked for DWP for over thirty years, and but for his employment at DWP, my life would have been dramatically different. So in summary, I'll say I will do the absolute best I can to serve all the ratepayers, as well as all the people of the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Reyes is our next speaker, then Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I rise to support Mr. Sales. I remember him back in the early 90s, was working with the gas company, was just sharing that with him earlier. It's great to see the career evolve and develop in such a way where you're now at, I think, a very important place of discretion as Commissioner of a very critical arm of the city's family. And I wasn't, should be aware of this, but it was Department of Water and Power who paid for the River Master Plan. They did it on their economic development unit. The first three million actually got us to a place where we wanted to start connecting the dots when it came to how we establish a water system that also is responding to the watershed while it creates places where we can address the pressures of the city, both from a physical point of view, recreational, economic development, as well as how we treat our water and capture our urban slobber before it gets to our ocean and essentially ruining our beaches and our coral reefs. And now we can't even swim in certain parts of the ocean because of that type of contamination. So given that connectivity that Department of Water and Power has had, and given the amount of land it controls along the riverway, either on the water side or the power side, I want to get from your perspective, in a very general way, because I know you're just going to be starting, what kind of advantages you could see the Department of Water and Power bringing to the table that continues from the place in where they started, the first initial three million, to actually get the master plan done? Thank you.
Councilman, I'll have to be honest with you. I'm not familiar with what DWP has done with respect to the L.A. River Project. I do think, though, that DWP should play a critical role in economic development in the city, as well as in minimizing environmental impacts. And those are two of the things that I would work on. I will familiarize myself with the L.A. River Project specifically, and be glad to get back to you on the details of how we might work together on that.
Well, let me just leave this with you. Back in the 30s, when they were essentially encasing the river with cement, it was a stimulus package for the Depression era. At a time when they needed jobs, thousands and thousands of jobs were created to actually establish this, one of the quickest waterways in the world, to get the flooding waters out of the basin. Today, we have just as much of an advantage if we had the political will to create jobs to break out that cement, redesign the channel so that it has multiple purposes on one side. And imagine if we can give this city that facelift. And the mantra I've been using is converting our backyard into our front yard, and how we redefine ourselves. So I'm looking forward to working with you. I know our Mission High has been a strong supporter, but it has to make economic sense. We have the ability to create jobs now, if we chose to give it that attention. So I look forward to working with you, and I encourage an a-vote. And I thank you, sir, for everything you've done throughout your career for the city. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Tom, very happy that you'll be going over to the Department of Water and Power as a Commissioner, a very important role. And we've had a lot of discussion over the last couple of years about transparency and cooperation and working with others, and I know that has historically been your engagement, whether it's in the public or private sector, that you have been active in. And I think that as we go forward, your input on that, when we talk about renewable energy, when we talk about ensuring taxpayers are getting the best bang for their buck as far as water and power in the City of Los Angeles. And so I just wanted to stand up because we have had a long relationship here in the city, and your expertise, your knowledge, your willingness to, I think, involve the community, and your new position, even though it's at that other school. Those of us that are Bruins will still support you here today. But nice to have you and your son, who is here, I think still here, for us to approve your nomination today to serve as a Board of Public Works, excuse me, Board, having a hard time, DWP Commissioner today. So thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to stand up and support this appointment.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Labange is next.
Commissioner designee, good to see you, Washington General here. Just want to think, I have a little background with the Water and Power, and that's very important. I think your background at Edison's is very important. One thing that I always like to stand for, although it gets confused around here, is because it's a Los Angeles public entity, they pay no property taxes. So I gladly believe in the transfer that Water and Power has helped the city over the years, because when you were at Edison, you paid property taxes.
Absolutely, yes.
So there's some kind of, hopefully, better study in the future to look at that, so there's equity for the transmission lines, for the yards, for the John F. R. Building at the office building on Hope Street, 111 North Hope, and other facilities around the city. Just a little thing to put in your mind, because that's one of my aspects that I'm working on. On water conservation, I represent the Arts and Parks Committee for the city, and the water consumption by record parks is down under, from two years ago, forty percent. There's a few modifications we may need to have because of their pool system, and also some playgrounds do have misters which have been shut off. We want to get them turned back on. I'm working with your management on that, but I want just to make you aware, because not everybody, many people rely on a public pool or the public playground for their exposure to that part of recreation, which is so important. So tell me more about your father and his role with Water and Power and members. I think this is an important aspect when you hear someone, because there's a great tradition and heritage at DWP.
He was a rank-and-file employee, a member of IBW. He was a storekeeper. He worked at 1630 North Main Street, and the facility, I'm told, is still there. And I think what I remember most is his continued relationships with his fellow employees. They went long after he retired, twenty-five years ago. He would go to the DWP picnics, he was an active participant, and to this day, my mother survives off her DWP pension, and we appreciate that.
Very much so. So the commitment, and he goes back over a hundred years from time, and the commitment's there, and that's nice to hear. God bless your father's memory. A great designee, soon-to-be Commissioner of the Department of Water and Power Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you for those nice words. Mr. Rosenthal is next, and then Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you, Ms. President. Good morning. Good morning. They're really working on you here. It's good to see you. Couple of quick questions. You know we're in Phase Three of the drought, and what that means to anybody watching this is no watering between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. seven days a week. No matter what it is, you cannot water between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. You can hand-water seven days a week before 9:00 and after 4:00. That is a shift in the way we operate, and that's obviously because we have a crisis with our water. One of the reasons we do is our concern about the delta. Have you spent any time focusing on the delta and the issues up there, and how vulnerable we are to that?
No, I've not, no. I am far more familiar with the power side of the business, that's my background. I will get up and speak quickly on the water issues. I understand, obviously, the growing importance of water to the city, and I will get up and speak quickly on those issues.
It's very important that we, as a city, take a deeper interest in that delta situation, because our water comes from the delta. And the stronger you become aware of that, and the more politics we play with Sacramento on it, the more comfortable I will be. Second issue is the water that goes through the Great Valley that is necessary for all the crops. We need to focus on changing some of the crops. We can no longer do rice, which is for a wet place. And we need to deal with the farmers who get water for practically nothing, rightly so, they got to feed us, but a lot of the water is wasted. And that is another issue we need to look at. With scarcity of water, we can't waste it in one place and use it in the other. And the third thing about water is the permeate of the new technology of building streets and alleys where the water can go through those kinds of substances so we can build up our aquifer. Those are three big water issues that I hope you can give us some attention.
I will. I'm committed to doing that.
All right, that's it. Thank you so much, and welcome aboard, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon.
Hello, Tom. Councilman? Tom, we've worked for many years on a variety of issues dating back to Southern California Gas Company.
Yes.
But I have to say, I'm a little bit concerned about your investment portfolio, in that you have investments with Edison and Sempra, and the issue of recusal could come up, and your role as Department of Water and Power Commissioner, I'm sure that has crossed your mind, and I'd like to get your thoughts on how you plan to avoid those concerns.
Well, obviously, any matter that comes up relating to any of those two companies, I would simply recuse myself. If it got to the point where that was recurrent, I would sell the shares. I don't own that many shares. I would simply divest myself of those shares if it became an issue.
Okay, then you're aware that if the item comes up three times, if recusal comes up three times in a year, you would have to, you would probably be asked to divest?
Yeah, long before that, I would divest.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I'll be happy to vote for you.
Thank you.
You'll be a great addition.
Thank you very much. Dr. Clyde Williams is first for our public comments on this. This was waived out of committee. We did not have a hearing in committee, so Dr. Clyde Williams will be our first speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Serena, Northeast LA. This afternoon, the Board of Water and Power, perhaps with the future representative, will be considering the ratepayers again for the Tier One, Tier Two. They are responding to city council requests. One of the requests, however, was to consider the conditions of those people who have already conserved a lot of water, such as fifty gallons per person per day, or less in some cases, and that the past usage will be considered and be imposed upon the current low-conserving users. We're trying to make sure that the existing users are not penalized for their past conservation. You will also be considering one more support of a twenty percent reduction later on in this agenda. This representative will be considering that as to how it will impact upon the Board of Public Works, sorry, the Board of Water and Power, the Department of Water and Power, and us, the customers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd in San Pedro.
Yeah, thank you so much. Nice to be in the San Pedro location. Look, we said it a lot of times about Commissioner appointments, there's a lot of problems with them from the mayor. And there's a lot of funny and loaded management and things that get pushed people's way, and it all goes through the Commissioners. So all you need to do is make sure that you're not getting swayed by any of the shady money that's floating around. You know, the city's just lost a bunch of money through Commissioners, through pension appointments. So anybody who's watching needs to call in and find out what's going on with the mayor and the pension fund crisis. This Commissioner, yeah, I'm asking for a yes vote, of course, but I'm just saying, watch out, they're going to come for you, there's sharks swimming in the water.
Thank you. We also have Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys on number eighteen as well. Mr. Nightingale?
Yes, good morning, Rick Nightingale. I hope this Commissioner, I hear there in the council people are talking about the Los Angeles Riverbed. I don't understand, they put the concrete in, and you go down through there, and there's obviously through all the years, there's a lot of dirt down there and everything else, and you do have brush and trees and everything, it's beautiful down by Griffith Park. I don't know why you want to take out the concrete, if we do have a lot of water or something, hopefully, that it serves as a bumper as for the water going in the ground. I don't think there's that much water going to go in the ground, and it'll just wash the dirt away and undermine the sides. Now, I don't know what type of engineer you're going to get to stop that. And then another thing is, I hope this Commissioner has something to do with the gray water. We have a lot of gray water going down the drain that we're not using, that we can use, especially through some of the parks and other things. I know a lot of them use it, but like Porter Ranch up there, where the golf course and so forth, that nobody is using the gray water, and we are desperate for gray water. Now, I know it's against a lot of people's rules that you can't put it in the ground and so forth, but when you're in dire need, you have to use it. And I hope he has something to do with that, that they can make some type of decision, even though I realize it could be against the people, and that, because my dad lived up in Sun Valley where they were going to dump it, and they were all against it and so forth. But it does go through the ground, and that's the way they used to purify water, is through sand. And sand will purify the water. And I hope that he will look into this and have to do what he has to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. That will close our public hearing on number eighteen. Now it's time for the vote, Mr. Sales. And with that, Madam Clerk, if you can please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard. Round of applause for our new Commissioner. Thank you for giving your time. We'll now go to our general public comment. This is two minutes per speaker. We have Richard Kearns is our first speaker, and after that is Sean Murphy, both here in council chambers. And a very good morning to you, Mr. Kearns. If we could just remind folks, we have a public comment now. Thank you.
Good morning, President Garcetti, distinguished council members. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a fifty-eight-year-old gay man, alive with AIDS for more than twenty years, an activist and long-term survivor, medical cannabis patient and advocate, a poet and journalist. This past weekend was Gay Pride, and then yesterday was an AIDS memorial service. It is my sad duty to inform you of the passing of L.A. AIDS hero, Olivia Kader. This is the poem I had the honor of reading at her gathered memorial yesterday. I've given the clerk copies for the council members. Her name was and still is Olivia. She was an L.A. AIDS empowerment regular, was and still is a shining light. Born in Zimbabwe, a costumer and a seamstress, and grieving mother for her eighteen-year-old, eighteen-month-old AIDS-dead infant son, dad on the down-low. Too-too-long ago, trashed by the meds, too-too-recently. Black, a woman, a foreigner, angry, articulate, and embodying just about every social service taboo in the book. Rare, precious, and luminous, always a beacon to love safe harbor from the storm, rather than the easy, illusionary escape from fear. One death is every death. Each death slays me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearns. Sean Murphy is our next speaker, and after that is Ken Newman. Good morning, Ms. Murphy.
Good morning, City Councilman. Mr. President, I want to thank Wendy Gruel for what she's done to the City Council during the eight years, eight years she has done. I appreciate it, Wendy. You are going to go into the controller's seat. I hope you do, I hope you do well in it. I want to point out to all the Sean Murphy fans, this is my last city council meeting for the summer. I'm going on a summer break, be back September 22nd, Election Day, and I will be voting for Frank Chantel for City Council, too. One more thing, the streets are doing well. Lakers, baby, Lakers! Yeah, Lakers! I'm glad the, I'm glad the city's not spending any money for the Laker parade. Antonio's gaining the money from the private sector, which is good, which is good, so we don't have to spend, so the city won't have to spend any more money than it normally spends. We can't spend any more money. The city is on a budget right now, and I didn't, and I, every time I hear Arnold Schwarzenegger cut more programs, the angrier I get. He should be, he should be recalled. He should be recalled, he should be removed from the governor's office. A better governor should take that seat. Also, Wilshire Boulevard, someone came up to me the other day and says, Sean, why don't you talk about Wilshire Boulevard being paid? Wilshire Boulevard needs to be repaid. And I said, I will, when I go to my last city council meeting this Tuesday. I was talking to him on the bus. I hope the rest of the streets will get paid, and I hope whoever, Frank Chantel does well in City, too, I think he's going to win, I think he's going to win. I said to you I was not going to predict, but I'm going to pray that he wins. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ken Newman is our next speaker, and then Dr. Clyde Williams. Is Ken, is it Newman or Newman? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say a word that I'm glad that the city is not going to waste any money on sponsoring a parade, because it's bad enough that the city can't even keep its own... own workers on the payroll, and that million dollars would keep them people working for at least a few days. But I have, what makes me kinda upset is the city don't go after the organization to recover the damage for the six buses and all the poor trees that were pulled out of the ground and set on fire. I mean, the taxpayers gotta pay for that. Somebody should be held accountable for it, even if it is the Lakers' organization, because it's their fans that caused all the damage. And again, if these donations do come through, and I think the city should, before they even let the parade kick off, make sure those donations are secured in the bank payable to the city of LA. There's enough money being wasted, and it's gotta end somewhere. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Dr. Clyde Williams is next. After that, we'll go back to Van Nuys, and Bruce Darian will follow. Good morning, Ken.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Within two weeks, you're going to be considering the fate of Southwest Museum through the decisions regarding the Autry National Center in Griffith Park. I'd like to quote some of the things from the overriding considerations. "It is the mission of the Autry and the city of Los Angeles that lessons learned from the history of the West will inform our shared future." By the way, Autry has not complied any time during the last 20 years with the terms and conditions of their lease with the city of Los Angeles. Does this say what's going to happen in the future? Based upon what they say in the overriding considerations, it does. Another one, one of America's most significant collections of artifacts of the American West. That collection is now housed in the Southwest Museum, which is the responsibility of the Autry National Center, to maintain as an independent and fully-recognized museum. Neglect has led to Autry's pillaging of the collection and the library to the Griffith Park area. One thing I do agree with is, the Autry is to become a nationally-respected site for the exhibition and conservation of art and artifacts of the American West. That is, the collection and the library from the Southwest Museum. It says "become," because right now, they don't have a collection, they don't have a library in Griffith Park that is worthy of being called a museum collection. Autry's six shooters don't count. The Southwest Museum and its collection does count. Please delay this decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce Darian is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that is Miriam Fogler. Good morning.
City Council, I left a press release with the Sergeant-at-Arms here to distribute to each of the council members.
Thank you. We'll make sure I got to distribute.
Thank you. It's rebuilding the historic Malibu Pier, tidal wave of malfeasance hits the Malibu Pier. Let's talk about how the connection is Malibu Pier and the city of LA, and the county, and the state, and everything. Let's go over it specifically. So, the public has a clear understanding, your city attorney does, you as a council, let's get into some of the facts here. In the press release, I talk about the discharge of DDT and PCBs to Malibu Creek. Now, let's be clear here. The sewage that's going from Malibu, Pepperdine, LA County, Calabasas, and Thousand Oaks, goes through the LA River, and then heads out down to Palos Verdes. So, it's diverted. It goes to the Los Virginus Reclamation Facility, and then is pumped back to Calabasas Creek, and makes its way through the Los Angeles River, which is an aqueduct of pollution, and then makes its way down to Palos Verdes. Last Wednesday, I talked about the pollution, the DDT site there off of Palos Verdes being one of the biggest in the world. It was written about it in Friday's LA Times as a super-fun site. Malibu Canyon has long been a dumping site for toxic chemicals. I brought a Clean Water Act suit. It's gone through the courts, and we'll be filing a writ of certiorari in the Supreme Court to hopefully have it heard, which, as we know, that's a slim chance. But nonetheless, the documentation is there. I've been talking about this fraud on the people for a decade. It's been covered up. You have four of your council members, your mayor, that were all part of the state legislature, including Mr. Cardenas. I wrote him on July 1st of 2000. You can go to MalibuPierScandal.com, and you can read the letter that went to Mr. Cardenas. And you have other members of the city council that are part of the state legislature. Mr. Schwarzenegger is a part of this corruption as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darian. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys. After that is Donna Perman. Morning, Ms. Fogler.
Good morning. There were some interesting speakers on Wednesday, and I'd like to rebut them. Anyway, Mr. Fittagian, to me, is equated to a communist, what he says, that it's somebody else's money. When you go out and work, and you're working to make a living, and you pay taxes, then you're supposed to get paid for your service, when you work. And you're working. And you're not working, and you don't deserve to get paid. You don't deserve to get nothing. That's where he's got mixed up. So, as far as I'm concerned, he wants to get rid of the working middle class here, and make it only for big executives and peasants, like the old, like communist countries, only people who don't work. So, that's what you call your socialism or communism of the miserable, you know, people. So, his socialism that he calls, is to me, is communism. He doesn't want anybody to have any money, he doesn't want anybody to give any services to the public. Obviously, you know, the people who don't work get free handouts. And that's okay with him. It's okay with him to get that, because that's, obviously, that's what he likes to see. He likes to see that happen, so that nobody would be making anything in this country to run this country, to pay the taxes, to send our people over there to fight for our freedom. What freedom do you have with money if you don't, if you don't have the freedom to have the money to pay for it? Freedom is not free. So, I don't know where he's coming from. He's, he's a radical communist, as far as I'm concerned, and I hope people don't go to him for being a mayor, and I'm spending my whole time to talk about this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Donna Perman is our next speaker. After that will be Nancy Severson.
I'm glad and surprised to see you, Mr. Garcetti.
You, too.
First, I say, no furloughs, no concessions. Bill Geno John, attention, attention. City employees are also taxpayers. Guess what? City employees pay their share of taxes also. City, county, state, and federal employees need to stand together, servants of the public. Yes, city and federal employees also pay taxes, even council members pay taxes, along with grocery store workers, hotel workers, bus drivers, we all need to stand together. Bill Geno John, everyone gets money from somewhere, it comes from someplace, so don't talk about using other people's money. And then the private industry, like private industry, city employees are only asking for what's right. We need to go after waste, like we go after the $1 million parade, but now it looks like that's coming from private industry, but it better be. And I'm not happy that city council is gonna be paid, and they're gonna be off tomorrow, I'm not, probably for the parade. How is it to say that city employees are crying after being told they're being on furlough? How about the $1 million spent on police department for men who didn't get to be lieutenants? Why couldn't they settle it earlier? Mr. Geno John, aren't these men crying? All of us, all of us hard-working people, no matter what you do, yes, even private industry. When private industry lets go of people, it's not the right thing to do. We all should be treated fairly. When our city's in trouble, even everyone in the city. Yes, even the homeless, they can help in some ways. I see one man sweep up outside Starbucks in Westwood. Everybody needs to help out the city of Los Angeles. Everyone needs to go, I mean, everyone needs to help. And, oh, yeah, but Bill Geno John, if you don't like our city services, you don't want to pay for it, you can leave. And it's a, he's a communist system, people are working, he wants people working for nothing. He has no compassion, Bill Geno John has no compassion. We need to look for compassionate ways, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Severson, also in Van Nuys, and then we'll come back here, and Walter Bechtel will be our next speaker in council chambers.
Hi, I'm Nancy Severson. I live at 13430 Chandler Boulevard in Sherman Oaks. I am just speaking as I attended the South Valley Planning Commission, which denied the project for the hub down the street from Chandler.
Excuse me, ma'am, we have that actually on the agenda. The public comment section is for items that are not on the agenda, so we can put your card in for that item, but we can't take that in our general public comment, okay?
Okay, I agree. Thank you.
My apologies. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you very much. I wanted to say something because of the LAPD consent decree review that was extended for two weeks. I just, I think I've already expressed myself what I feel about, but I think I should say something as far as that is concerned. I don't, I don't think that the monitor is really doing the job that he's supposed to be doing. I think what we probably need is another monitor, is what the problem is, because what I've been seeing, a lot of other people have been seeing, is that LAPD just simply isn't filing any reports about serious crimes at all. We're watching things like mayhem, assault with deadly weapons, attempted murders, attempted rapes, being instantly reduced to misdemeanor charges, or not having any charges filed against these people at all. That's far more serious than not complying with a few of the items in the consent decree, which the monitor has said that that was the only thing that they seemed to find wrong. In fact, the kind of things that I'm talking about, fraudulently reducing charges and refusing to file reports, is more akin to moving from a refusal to comply with consent decree and going to Plan B, where we go through and start arresting and prosecuting senior leads, CEOs, and whoever's involved in the upper echelon of the LAPD. But I do want to say that most of the new officers are really good quality people. They treat us out there really kindly. Unfortunately, if you leave a hierarchy in there, the old guys that have been in there, they start to tell the new officers, okay, you've had your day, and, but now you're gonna have to start doing it the way we want you to do that. I think the idea is to get rid of those kind of officers that caused our problem to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys, and after that, we have someone who just filled out a public comment on San Pedro, if they want to come forward after that. Rick Nightingale, that was next in Van Nuys.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. Nobody said it, but I really compliment the police department from yesterday's May Day type thing. Unbelievable that there are some people that are just, I don't know what name that I can think of that I can say in the mic. I mean, why do people have to act that way where it goes all over the world? Far as I'm concerned, I hope the city attorney goes in like a terrorism thing. That will really put them in the slammer, because there is no reason for somebody to act that way. I personally think they want the police to do something, so the ACLU can come in there and try to sue, and get a judgment to turn around and sue the city, because they just think we're just made of money. But I really want to compliment them, they did a very good job. But, like I said, I hope they trace them all down, and I hope they do it. Another thing is, it really bothered me, is with the Proposition 8 when it passed, and all these activists going still after the people that donated money. They are just as scummy as the people that turned around and rioted yesterday, that they don't have the gumption to turn around and come out of their little hiding hole like a little rat, and turn around and say, but they gotta go over the computer, and turn around and go after people, and threaten people, and so forth. I just don't understand how people can act this way anywhere in the world, that if you have something to say to somebody, come out and say it to their face, but be, but let's be honest with each other. And another thing is with the fire department, that we turn around, here we got another lawsuit, and they settle for a million-three or something like that. I think that every time a lawsuit comes out of some type of, if it's DWP, Fire Department, it comes out of their budget. That means they're gonna get cut in some place, and that means the rest of them can go after that person and straighten them up, because their own people will straighten them up when it hits the pocketbook. Because my motto is, my parents didn't like it, people understand money and pain. And if you get with pain and money...
We have somebody here who filled out a card, it just says San Pedro, there's no name in regards to conditional use permit, DWP. Is that yours, sir? Will you give us your name, sir?
Pete Boemeister.
What's your name, sir?
Pete Boemeister.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boemeister. Go ahead.
Good morning, councils, and president. I have been before you, but this time I'll be here in person, because in my San Pedro, you cannot see all this, and we need your support, we need your help regarding our conditional use permit with Department of Water and Power. I'm retired since 98. I used to be a canine trainer, and our voluntary group prepared a nice, unique park-like setting right on the 4 or 5 and Figueroa. It's all involuntary work is done, and no charge to the Department of Water and Power, and not any cost to the city. We train our, the social group is training there, and also the police department's on and off duty. I speak especially for our four-legged friends, our dogs. They have to have a place to go and train in case of emergency. We had a problem in New York with 9/11, and anything happened in the harbor that affects not just Los Angeles, it affects the nation. And we need to have a place to prepare our dogs, and our canine officers have to have a place to run the dogs and exercise the dogs. We want to encourage them and not discourage them, and we also want encouraging all the voluntary groups to help the department, the police departments, to get in their dogs. And Department of Water and Power, all of a sudden, we are over there for 22 years, exempt, and they always say we were the free. It costs us money to be there, and also the voluntary groups supporting us. I have petition, hundreds of petitions, and also you see the newspapers, and here's the condition, like it was before and like it is after. And when it comes before, we appreciate your consideration, your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boemeister. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd in San Pedro.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, here's the double standard, okay? Now, we had a marijuana co-op public hearing, and there was a guy, as he left the podium, he uttered a profanity, cure my effing cancer, and the city attorney said that that was okay, because he was leaving the podium, so it's not a disruption to the meeting, it's more of a disruption to stop the meeting and admonish him. So, the utterance I made at Van Nuys was as I was exiting the podium, and Zuma Dog made an utterance, alleged profanity, which is not profanity, he said loser. You know, everyone's a loser in some way, but, you know, some are more than others, that's the point he was making, but as he left the podium, the city attorney needs to be admonished right now for making out that that was a disruption. We got the press, everything, this is a, this is a big one now. So, you just call Zuma Dog's card, and you'll avert another lawsuit, the city of Los Angeles, over the most basic thing. And you're taking away our time from talking about the important things, and now I'm starting to get upset, and I really, I really just wanted, you know, I don't like to get upset like this. Here's what everyone needs to do. If you're a city employee, at any time of the city of Los Angeles, and you've paid money into a pension fund, that money has gone. Now, it's very serious, so you need to investigate, and don't pay any more money in. You know, you need to be talking to some attorneys or some people to recover, because that's not gonna be pretty when people don't get their retirement funds. So, it's the biggest thing right now, the loss of the money. We need to look at ways of recovering money, and you need to talk to people who can help to recover that money in ways that are not just outright taxing the people. Call Zuma Dog Public Comment.
Mark Hurd is our next speaker, also in San Pedro. After that is Michael Carrion here in council chambers. Morning, Mr. Hurd.
He just wants to get sued to high heaven. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
City Council, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Hold on one second, Mr. Hurd, if I can ask the individuals behind you to please let you speak without being in the way and disrupting the meeting, and we'll wait. If we could please respect Mr. Hurd right now and allow him to speak unobstructed and without disruption to the meeting. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hurd? Okay, we'll go here to Michael Carrion, and we'll come back to Mr. Hurd when he has a clear place to speak. a, a clear place to speak. Mr. Carrion?
My name is Michael Carrion. And it's funny that you ask people to sit down so they can hear. We have, the whole bench right here is talking and I can't hear anything back here. I asked the security guard here, he doesn't do nothing.
Hold on, Mr. Carrion. If you can ask everybody on both sides, please, of the ropes, to keep their conversations to a minimum. We know some conversations are unavoidable, but please, so we can best listen to the public comment. Mr. Carrion, please.
The whole city council was having conversations while everybody out there was speaking. They're having them now. Nobody's paying attention. Then you want to know why people get upset, why people use vulgar language. Mr. Zion is having a conversation. Um, Ms. Han is having a conversation. Mr. Alakon is having a conversation. And yet, you get upset. Security guard comes over here and tells other people that are in public to be quiet.
Don't worry, he tells us to.
When he gets questions, he gets upset.
He tells us to, don't worry.
Oh, yeah. He gets in a real buffed up and a threatening manner, I'll kick you out. Then he ought to tell everybody to shut up or nobody. Anyway, just get back to why I'm here. The mayor wants to put up a million dollars for a parade. Quit putting, pushing the fat up, that's not muscle. There he goes flexing again. He ought to retire. I think he's getting...
Sir, if you'd please adjust the council as a whole.
Okay. I'm here for the mayor wants to put up a million dollars of private funds for a parade. I am one of the Laker fans that will be at that parade. I just don't think the city should pay for it. The mayor's talking about private funds. If he has that much clout, why can't he fix his budget? If he's got a million dollars for a parade, he can put a million dollars in the budget to save a few of these jobs. He doesn't care about the city. He just wants him and his girlfriend to be at this parade and be up front sitting there. I'm also here to talk about the parking. I spoke to Mr. Labons the other day, he was very upset about it. He said that the courts agree with me that the police shouldn't be parking there, but I should speak to Ms. Gru because that's her department, but Ms. Gru doesn't do anything about it. Ms. Perry's hurt me for a long time, that's her district. You guys don't care. People come up here and tell you that there's laws being broken and you do, cut them off.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Is, uh, is Mr. Hurd ready to speak unobstructed in San Pedro? We don't have any other personnel there.
Yes, I am, yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Ask if folks can stand, but if they would please, uh, not disrupt the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hurd, go ahead.
Yes, very much, very much. They will be proper. Thank you very much. I wanted to speak about the LA City Council drafting a letter to the Vice President regarding the prisoners at Guantanamo Bay. I'd like to see them get their due process in, in a court, uh, the federal courts in Manhattan, who processed the criminals that blew up the World Trade Center in 1993. Hello? Can we do that? And then, then, then I would have had my friends here take off their hats, but anyway, that didn't work. I'd also like to talk about Councilmember Wendy Gruel, uh, my condolences to her family on her loss. I'm very, very sorry and I just want to express that. I haven't been here in a long time, so... And also, I do want to speak about speaking in front of the LA City Council. I think freedom of speech is a, is, it's the First Amendment, but I think it's a, it's a God-given human right for every single person on this planet to have the right to speak. And you guys will let billboards pop up all over this city with all kinds of messages, but if I want to deliver my message here today with some gentleman wearing whatever, oh, no, that's not okay. That's beyond freedom of speech. Is that how it works? I'd like to even think about that. Uh, Mr. Garcia, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That will close our general public comment for today. If we can go to items called special, I believe, Ms. Gruel, did you want to take item 38 out of order or, or Mr. Weiss, I'm sorry? What do we want to go to? Another item right now?
I think Mr. Weiss and Mr. Weiss's staff, I'm sure he's just in the back there too, on this item, if we go ahead to have a, I think there's been no public hearing, so if you want to just have a...
If there's no objection, then we'll, we'll go to item 38 and we do have speaker cards on this. The public hearing was waived out of committee, so we will have the public hearing here. Is there any motion for how long? We do have about, we can do, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 cards in thus far. Is there any motion for how we want to do this? We can either do 20 minutes, two minutes at a time, but if we do that, we might only get to 10 speakers, or we can try to do a minute each and get to as many speakers as possible. Yes?
A minute each, I think. A minute each.
A minute each, okay. There's been a motion for a minute per, per speaker and then we'll be able to get through every card. Yes, Mr. Labon?
And if people need a little extra time on their minute, you know...
All right, but I want to try to keep it as consistent as possible, so folks obviously can finish their, their thought as the buzzer goes, but we'll, we'll set the clock at a minute per speaker. And thank you to everybody who's here on this item. Our first speaker is Jeff Gantman and after that is Mitch Raymond. And if, and if anybody has things they'd like us to read, we can make sure that Sergeant Arms gets that and we'll make sure those are distributed. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council. My name is Jeff Gantman and I'm a resident of Sherman Oaks. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council on this important issue. I'm here representing more than 200 individuals and families from the neighborhood around 13079 Chandler Boulevard, some of whom are here with me today and some are in Van Nuys. My simple message is this: I respectfully ask that this council support the decision of the South Valley Area Planning Commission and oppose any action to reverse or modify their decision denying this project of February 12, 2009. This conversation's been going on for over a year and a half. If the council takes jurisdiction now, the community will be prevented from coming together to find a win-win solution that we all know exists here. In fact, we look forward to the next stage of this process when we, the new council member and Chabad, can all sit down and help shape a project that meets everyone's needs. This project has been denied four times, four times. Three by the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council and, and most recently by the South Valley Area Planning Commission. The size, the scale, the myriad of zoning variances sought for this project simply do not fit at this project. That doesn't, I'll take, may I take another couple of minutes here? Just another 30 seconds.
You finish this sentence, please, not, not another 30 seconds.
At this late point, there's no time for all this kind of substantive conversation about the project that the community, that Chabad and at the district all deserve.
Thank you, sir.
We would appreciate you voting no to assert jurisdiction. Thank you.
You bet. Uh, Mitch Raymond is our next speaker and then after that is Nancy Severson in Van Nuys again. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mitch Raymond. I live about 150 feet west of the proposed project. I am here to respectfully ask that you, that the city council uphold the decision of this APC that denied the project located at 13079 Chandler Boulevard. The proposed project consists of a 10,300-square-foot commercial building on a small triangular-shaped remnant lot in a single-family neighborhood where most lots to the east and west are zoned RE-11, low density. The APC voted 4-0 against the project with quotes like, "right building, wrong place, too many variables that cannot be resolved, the conditions could not be enforced by the city to mitigate impacts." The APC determined that overbuilding on a site with such physical limitations is not a reasonable land use alternative and that the project suggests that it has outgrown the site and is better suited to a large site, larger-sized parcel and/or location. Chabad has been our neighbor for 27 years and they will continue to be our neighbor, but as their existing CUP dictates, use of the site was granted only as a limited-function Orthodox synagogue with restrictions governing the activities and usage of this site and the size of the congregation.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments very much. Uh, Nancy Severson is our next speaker in Van Nuys. We'll come back here for Dee Tungavet.
Nancy Severson, I live on Chandler Boulevard. I did attend the Planning Commission's meeting, which did deny the project due to the building being too large and the lot too small. And I would respectfully ask the council members to uphold the decision of the South Valley Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and thank you for your understanding before. Dee Tungavet is next and after that is Scott Zibek. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dee Tungavet. I live across the street from Chabad. As the project's going on, I don't think it's, the building is a very nice building, big, gigantic in my area, and I don't think it's appropriate for the site. And also the parking, they're asking for only five parking. That will create a big issue for the residents, this is on Chandler Boulevard, which is the most unique area in the area. I would like to invite all of you to visit the Chandler area so you can see that it's a really excellent residence to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Zubek?
Good morning. My name is Scott Zubek. I live on Margate Street, about 500 feet from where the Chabad is planned. I've been a resident of the San Fernando Valley for all of my 53 years. In fact, grew up five minutes from where I live now. This neighborhood is an older neighborhood with all single-family homes, beautiful tree-lined streets. The basic problem with this project is it is simply trying to force a square peg into a round hole. And I'm here to ask you to deny the project and help us to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood in an area that's surrounded by neighborhoods that have been overbuilt, mansionized, lots of apartments, condos, and have no integrity to their neighborhoods any longer. Again, I ask that you deny this project and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Looks like Carst, Carsten Melman?
Yeah, good morning. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity. I lived in this neighborhood for four years and in Sherman Oaks for six years and the Chabad has been with us for 27 years, which I think is a great thing. Um, you know, for the last 18 months, you know, the neighborhood has been involved in many hearings and, you know, and the formal processes, you know, and we all know what the current status is. And the last, you know, vote of the Area Planning Commission denied this project. So, I actually oppose asserting jurisdiction, you know, as recommended, and I suggest to let the all stakeholders to continue the process in finding a mutually acceptable agreement because I think this is possible and, you know, thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak here today. Thanks.
Thank you. CJ Laffer?
President Garcia, members of the city council, my name is CJ Laffer of Jeffre Mangles Butler &amp; Marmro, 1900 Avenue, The Stars. I'm here on behalf of Chabad of North Hollywood, asking you to assert jurisdiction over their request for a new synagogue. Chabad merely wants to replace a small aging facility with a modern building to provide a sanctuary, facilities for community activities and religious instruction. This is not an encroachment into a residential area. This is a neighborhood synagogue and it's been, they've been there for 30 years, serving the community, maintaining neighborhood compatibility. There's never been a residential use on the site. As you can see, Chabad has no immediately adjacent neighbors. It's an isolated triangular island abutting the MTA right-of-way and Chandler Boulevard, which is 150 feet wide. Chabad has reached out to the community, they've eliminated the third story, reduced square footage, and shifted the third of the project to the basement. And they volunteered operating conditions and the ZA approved the project. However, the APC completely denied it. We're here today before council because Chabad has no further right of appeal. On behalf of Chabad, I respectfully ask the city council to assert jurisdiction over this matter.
Rabbi Aaron Abin?
President Garcia, members of the city council, my name is Rabbi Aaron Abin. For the last 28 years, I've been the emissary of the Lubavitcher Rebbe, a blessed memory, as the spiritual leader of Chabad of North Hollywood, located at 13079 Chandler Boulevard. I'm here today to ask you to assert jurisdiction over our request for a new synagogue. Chabad of North Hollywood has been at this location for nearly 30 years. We have been at the heart of an established and vibrant Orthodox traditional Jewish community in northern Sherman Oaks. We have been a good neighbor in the surrounding residential area. Our synagogue is a vital, multi-generational community institution. By far, the majority of our regular worshippers are from the immediate surrounding residential neighborhood. Chabad is established at synagogues approximately every three miles throughout the valley so local residents can specifically walk to the house of worship. Chabad of North Hollywood is simply opposed to replace our existing outdated building with an updated modern building so we continue to provide a place for worship and facilities for community activities and religious instructions. After hearing from the community and at the bequest of the city council, we reduced the size of our building, the height of the building, we eliminated the third story. If I may just please ask everyone that came here for support to rise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elke Abin? Elke? Elke Abin?
Good morning, President Garcia and members of the city council. My name is Elke Abin. I live at 5246 Ethel Avenue, which is eight houses from the Chabad synagogue. We bought our house a little over two years ago and we chose this location because of how close it is to our synagogue so our children can walk there from a young age. My two-year-old and three-year-old now walk every Saturday on holiday. Unfortunately, there's not enough space there and there's nowhere for the children to play safely. On behalf of all the mothers, I ask that you please assert jurisdiction over our request for a new synagogue at 13079 Chandler Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Kaz?
President Garcia and members of the city council, my name is Scott Kaz. I live at 13060 Burbank Boulevard. It's a building on the corner of Ethel and Burbank, just a few blocks from the Chabad synagogue. I'm here today to ask you to assert jurisdiction over our request for a new synagogue at 13079 Chandler Boulevard. I walk to the shul every day. I don't see that most of the members are, are driving there at any time during the week. People walk here. The synagogue is integral to my life and many people in the community and it's an essential institution that deserves to be here. I see people when I walk to shul on a, on a Saturday morning of all, all kinds of origins, all denominations, all races, religions, I imagine, most of whom are very happy to have us in the community. Once again, please assert jurisdiction over this case to remedy the extreme decision of the South Valley Planning Commission.
Thank you. Mickey Genal?
Good morning, council. My name is Mickey Genal of Valley Glen. I worship at Chabad North Hollywood and I support the city council asserting its jurisdiction. It was the loss of my father and the challenges of my autistic boys growing up into adulthood that led me to Chabad for spiritual direction. Whether it is those who have come upon hard times, have family problems, experienced grief, have gotten a little lost in life and need direction, or have a need for more religious direction to add meaning to their life, Chabad North Hollywood cares not from where you come, but it cares to restore your spirit in order that you may pay it forward one day to do good for others. This is an immensely positive force in a community that is growing. I am hopeful that you will have compassion to assert jurisdiction over this case to remedy the extreme decision of the South Valley Planning Commission. Thank you.
Earl Rubenstein?
Earl Rubenstein, architect for Chabad at 610 Leport Avenue, Nasa Gundo. We've addressed all the community requirements for this facility by reducing it from four stories to three and to two, two stories. We've also reduced the bulk of the building down one-third below grade. I believe we've answered the community requirements by doing all that. Thank you very much.
Isadora Bailey?
Thank you. My name's Isadora Bailey. I live about a mile away from the synagogue. I walk with my family to the synagogue on holidays and on the Sabbath. I am in favor of the, the new Chabad synagogue. Simply put, it's a modest proposal, one that beautifies the area, doesn't detract from it, and will enhance the experience of the people who attend Chabad. Thank you for your time.
Josh Toller?
Members of the city council, my name is Josh Toller. I live at 13151 Chandler Boulevard, which is approximately seven houses from the Chabad synagogue. We recently purchased our home. We've been attending the synagogue for 28 years. We recently purchased our home, just houses from the, from the synagogue because it's an integral part of our lives and it's an integral part of our community. We walk there, not just on the Sabbath, I walk there daily. I, I see the problems in the neighborhood and I know that Chabad is nothing but an example for the neighborhood. Parking is not an issue and never has been an issue. As a member of this community, I, I, I ask that you please assert your jurisdiction over the South Valley Planning Commission. Thank you.
Shoshana Eisenfeld?
Hi, my name is Shoshana Reisenfeld, and I live about a third of a mile from Chabad of North Hollywood. And though I have a rather obvious handicap, which inhibits my mobility, I always walk or am taken by wheelchair to the synagogue on the Sabbath and holidays. Our synagogue has had the benefit of growth over the last 29 years, in part because of the large number of Jews who do not drive on the Sabbath and holidays have moved into the surrounding area. It is extremely important that the Chabad of North Hollywood be able to enlarge its facilities to accommodate its attendees in the Sherman Oaks Valley Village, Valley Glen, and Van Nuys area, who, due to beliefs, age, handicap, or young children, cannot walk long distances and do not drive on the Sabbath and holidays. Thank you.
Marion Diamond? In Van Nuys, Bond of Van Nuys?
Thank you. I live at 5301 Ethel Avenue, approximately 500 feet south of the Chabad synagogue, and I have lived in this house since 1958. That's 51 years. We are very happy, and always have been very happy, to have Chabad in the neighborhood. That is not the issue. It is the size of the proposed building and the lot on which it sits that is inappropriate. Chabad has started with a small membership. I believe its permit still allows for only a membership of about 45 or 50 people, which was an appropriate size. And as I said, welcome. An inappropriate building in both size and style is very destructive to the neighborhood. And it has been mentioned that Chandler Boulevard is a wide street. It is a beautiful wide street with trees in the center. But the synagogue sits on a corner of Ethel Avenue, and that corner of Ethel, that street of Ethel, that block of Ethel is narrow. It is...
You've had your time and then some, so, thank you. Maryam Bogler?
Yes, good morning. I've tended the synagogue many times, and I help Hashem guard the Ha'Chabad house forever, forever internal. And I'm Jewish, and I have nothing but Nahis and love. But we cannot overbuild our buildings here in the city. You know, we can't handle the density. I mean, this is a suburb of Los Angeles, and you're talking about making this into a urban here. You can't do this in the valley. There's too many small parcels like this one. It's too narrow, and you don't have enough parking here for other people who may come here on days when it's not the Shabbos. You know, you don't make people have to take a bus and have to walk on non-Shabbos days. I mean, I don't understand this. You've got to mitigate this thing, downsize, downsize it to accommodate parking and make the building where the neighbors won't be encroached.
Tess Raymond? That is our final speaker.
Hi, my name is Tess Raymond. I live two doors away from Chabad. Chabad has been our neighbor for 27 years, and they will continue to be our neighbor. But as their existing conditional use permit dictates, use of this site was granted only as a limited-function Orthodox synagogue with clear restrictions governing the activities and usages of the usage of this site and the size of the congregation. This location is simply not zoned for what is proposed. Chabad claims that parking will not be an issue because many of the congregants walk to service on the Sabbath. It needs to be noted that not all congregants walk. The restriction on driving is only one day a week, and Chabad has services and/or events nearly every day of the week. The proposed five parking spaces are wholly inadequate. Off-site parking cannot be successfully secured long-term, nor could it be effectively enforced. At this time, I respectfully ask the council to support the decision of the APC and oppose any action to reverse or modify their decision.
Thank you. That's our final speaker, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I want to thank Mr. Reyes for waiving the matter out of committee. We were going to have the hearing on the merits on the item tomorrow, but because tomorrow's council meeting has been canceled, we'll have the hearing on the merits on Friday. Today's a vote on asserting jurisdiction. As you've heard, it's an institution that has a lot of support in the community, has been there for a long time. There are a lot of details which we will go into as to the planning aspects of it. There is a, there's been a compromise that has been supported. There was a staff report earlier that supported it. We'll present all that on Friday. I appreciate your vote today to assert jurisdiction. Appreciate in the school's support as well.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Roosevelt?
Yes, and I want to thank Mr. Weiss, and I especially want to thank the community on both sides for coming here today. When we come back to, you know, exerting our responsibilities here, my big question will be about parking. Friday night, people come, leave cars there. Saturday night, pick them up. It's just the issue of how to deal with parking that I'd like to hear some more clarity on, obviously, as we exert and take jurisdiction over the project. But parking is a big issue for all of us in our city, and we need to address that issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Roosevelt. That is our final speaker on this matter. This matter is now before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That matter passes. Thank you. Next item, please. Next item, please.
Item nine called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, number nine?
Hold on.
Ms. Hahn wishes to hold that matter at this time?
Sure.
Okay, 17. Let's go to 17, please. 17.
And that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, number 17, then.
Where's 17?
We'll hold number nine for you.
Thank you, colleagues. This is a contract amendment with Fentress Architects for architectural and design services for the modernization of Bradley Terminal. I know we keep having these come before us on this modernization of LAX, but this will extend the contract by four years and increases the compensation to $92 million. So I know this is kind of a big amount, and I didn't know if we had somebody from the airport that wanted to come sit at the table and kind of answer what were some of the concerns that I brought up in committee, which was, seems like a lot of money. Why are we extending this four years? And could you tell the council, in the big scope of modernizing LAX, which we're all in favor of, what does this buy us?
Okay.
Thank you. Hold my time.
Roger Johnson, Deputy Executive Director, Los Angeles World Airports. If I could ask you, Ms. Hahn, if you could repeat the questions.
Right, well, I think, you know, when we have these, this is, this increases the compensation by $92 million to Fentress Architects. It extends their contract for four years. Modernizing LAX is clearly a priority for this council. So I guess for the public, for the council members, tell us what this exactly buys us. Seems like a lot of money, we're extending their contract a long way. What does this buy us?
Okay. First of all, is when we first bought this...
Hold my time.
When we first bought this contract before you, it was anticipated that it would be amended. And the reason for that was because, at the time we brought it forward, we did not have enough information to write a detailed scope of work for the design of the entire terminal. In fact, as, as some of you may recall, when we originally engaged this architect, they were going to design a new midfield satellite. And the project was redefined to be the Bradley project. So they have been spending some time working on the visioning and on the programming for the terminal, and we now have sufficient information to scope out final design. So what we're getting from this amendment is the scope of work to complete construction drawings, to do architectural and engineering services during bidding, bidding support, and construction administration during the construction of what we're calling the core portion of the Bradley West project.
So again, as you said, this is kind, and actually, this was an idea that I had put forward...
Yes, it was.
...a few years back, was we're modernizing Bradley, and yet we weren't getting any new gates out of it. So it seemed to me, I always talked about backsideing Bradley and adding gates, but this is kind of west side that we will be getting. How many new gates will we get?
We will have a total of 19 gates when the project is done, so...
When I was back in Washington DC, we met with the International Air Transportation Association, IATA. They were concerned on the cost, on how we were, how we were going to pay for this. There, we did talk about the passenger facility charge. So why don't you tell us how we're paying for this? But more importantly, I think for me, how are we continuing the dialogue with all of our carriers, who certainly have a vested interest on, you know, modernizing LAX? And how are we keeping them in the loop as we move forward with this? How are we paying for this?
Well, first of all, how we're paying for it is a combination of passenger facility charges. It will be terminal rent rates, or what we call M&amp;O rates, that get passed on to the air carriers as part of their rent for the facility, and then airport revenue. So it's a combination of those three funds that will be used to pay for the building. And it, as you know, we're working back in Washington, trying to get an increase in the passenger facility funds. An increase in that would allow us to reduce the M&amp;O rates or the rent rates that we would have to charge the air carriers, which would help keep some of their costs at a reasonable level. So that's our funding. It's PFCs, it is M&amp;O rents, and then other airport revenue. Some of it will be concessions. We're adding a significant amount of concessions. The concessions revenue will also help to pay for that, which is part of our airport revenue. With respect to working with the tenants, we are working with a company called Avair Pros that was originally hired by the Tom Bradley carriers. They have architects that are actually embedded in our team. They're involved in all of our design discussions, and they are working with us on a day-to-day basis in our offices to make sure that everything we're doing is fully vetted through the air carrier, so that they know step-by-step what we're doing, and they're involved in every design decision that we make.
And does this contract also include the midfield concourse?
It does not. No, it does not.
Okay. I mean, clearly, this is a lot of money, but it looks like, at least at the end of this four-year period, we will have a little, we'll step in the right direction of a more modern airport. We'll have new gates that will accommodate the next generation of aircraft, and we're moving in the right direction. It just, I think to the average person, this would seem like a lot of money. It doesn't really go into the bricks and mortar. This is really about designing the project.
It is a lot of money. It's a huge project, and we have, we're really holding the designers' feet to the fire on this. It's a billion-dollar project, so all of the costs associated with that are proportional to the cost of the project.
When will we know whether or not we can raise the passenger facility charge?
We have to work with Washington DC on that, so...
And we know that initially, public opinion survey says that most people are willing to pay a little bit extra on their ticket for the airport that they're flying in and out of, if it means a more improved terminal with better concessions and more convenient. We kind of have that initial feedback from the public, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, well, let us know how we can help, because I think that's an important piece of the funding.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Roosevelt?
First of all, I can't tell you how excited I am we're at this stage. Okay? It took a long time to get here, and the biggest issue was trust in Westchester. No expansion, modernization, yes, expansion, no. And so everybody's bought into that, and we've moved dramatically forward. Couple of quick questions. Number one, when do we plan to break ground, literally?
We are literally planning on breaking ground January, but that really depends on approval and certification of the environmental impact report for the project.
Well, you're an environmentalist, aren't you?
That's how I started my career.
I'm assuming that you'll make it, make it great. Are we still on track for delivering the first phase of the Bradley project by January 2012?
Yes, sir, we are.
It has to happen now. Okay. Now, at what point can we have a report to the committee, Ms. Hahn's committee, who's a great leader, regarding greening the building and the environmental aspects of the new Bradley terminal?
Do you want to answer that? Sure. We're currently, Mike Doucette with Los Angeles World Airports. We're currently in the design process, and just so you know, our minimum goal there is LEED Silver Certification for this building. We've brought on a number of environmental consultants to look at that, and later in the fall, we should have at least a pro forma as to how the building will perform environmentally.
Great. Now, next thing has to do with the runway status lights. I must tell you that Marion Blakely, when she was head of the FAA, was a great leader. That's one good thing Bush did, I can tell you, was put her in place. When Don Kenaby and Jane Harmon and I met with her, I brought up the runway status lights. I said, "Why don't we have it?" She says, "Well, we've done it in Dallas, and we're going to do it down in San Diego." I said, "No, no, no. We're it." She went back to Washington, she started on the process, and what happened last week?
We had a press conference on the runway status lights, which are now in place and operational at LAX.
And colleagues, what that means is safety, 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 which is our number-one issue at LAX. There's two ways for safety we can do right now. One is get in these runway status lights all over the airport, and two, up the train personnel in the tower. Okay? These are immediate actions that need to be taken. When can we see the entire system throughout LAX?
I will, I will have to take an IOU on that, councilman.
So what did we just do last week, then?
Last week, we unveiled the runway status lights that were put in on the north and south runway complex.
And so that's, what percentage would you say of the entire geometry of the airport?
Councilman, I'd rather defer that to our airfield ops guys and get back to you with a more educated answer on that one.
I appreciate that, and send it back to committee with that report, so that Ms. Hahn and Mr. Labange and I can discuss that right there and then. We're thrilled about it. And the last question, you know, has to do with the north side, which is the north side planning process. What is our sensing of the timing now on that?
I believe we're getting close. We've been negotiating an MOU with the city planning department so that they can take that over. We've had some hiccups because of the budget issues with being able to get personnel assigned to it. I believe we've worked through those, and we're ready, we're ready to get started on the formal planning process.
Yeah, because the hiccup's got to be gone, because LALA money will pay for those planners, and it will not affect the general fund, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Last little minor point, how about the three holes at Westchester for the golf course?
It is my understanding that the public comment period on the federal document has been closed, so hopefully we'll have an answer from the FAA very soon, so that we can negotiate the lease. We're ready to sign a lease. We just need to finalize the environmental assessment through the FAA.
Okay. Well, again, and thank you both very much for what you're doing. We're really excited about modernizing LAX, expansion, no. Thanks.
Thank you.
The matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. That matter passes. Next item.
Item 10 was called special by Councilmember Parks, but I believe a motion is in the works. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Mr. Parks, that motion is now circulating.
The motion has now been circulated.
Mr. Parks, you want number 10?
Could we have item 10 and 11 at the same time?
Mr. Clerk, 10 and 11?
And 11 was also called special by Parks, and there was an amending motion circulated on that as well.
All right, 10 and 11.
Okay. We'll start with item 11 first and ask the CAO and CLA to come up to give an overview of the financial, end-of-year financial status report for the 0809 fiscal year.
Mr. Parks, we have two cards on number 10. Would you like to hear from the public on this?
Please.
Number 10, Michael Carrion. Michael Carrion, number 10. Mr. Carrion is no longer here.
Did you ask him?
And Brian Kito. Mr. Kito, number 10, please.
Are we good?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Brian Kito. I own a Japanese confectionery store right here on First Street. I'm representing the Little Tokyo Community Council. The issue is about the parking and the budget, possibly the budget cuts to the parking projects here in Little Tokyo. I want to remind most of you here that Little Tok... I want to remind most of you here that Little Tokyo has provided its own parking for many years. We've worked on the parking problem that we've had for over ten to twelve years. The solutions that are here on your budget in question, they're being jeopardized. Our projects that we've worked on as compromises to try to solve the problem of our parking here in Little Tokyo. Unlike other communities, Little Tokyo shares a lot of its parking with city government agencies, especially the federal building, city buildings that are well underparked. So as a purpose, we basically get cheated out of parking because of the fact that we share most of our parking with city government and most of the government, not only city, but federal governments too. I'm here to ask you, as a businessman, if you intend to have us help pay back this debt that we are incurred in this bad economic time. My son will represent the fourth generation of my business. In order for you guys to be able to pay back this budget, we need that parking. You take out the parking, our businesses don't do well, you'll never get back on your feet. That's my suggestion. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Parks, we did hold your time, so we'll start over.
Okay. No other cards?
That, that was it. The other man, Mr. Carrion was not here, he left.
Okay. Let me ask Ray on item eleven, if we could start off and give the council an overview of the year-end and cover many of the issues we talked about in committee as far as the revenue expenditures, the cash flow, variety of things, state of the budget and things of that nature, if you can give them an overview as we end this fiscal year.
Okay, sure. As you know, we've, well, we've gone through a sort of a fiscal journey this past year. As we started early on, in early fall, we reported roughly $110 million shortfall, which grew to $130 million. And based on some actions adopted by the mayor and council back in December, the reduction or that shortfall was then reduced substantially by mid-year to roughly about $35 million. There were a number of cuts and some other reductions in the department to help achieve that. Now, of that 35 million, it has grown somewhat. We've had some mixed news in the sense that a revenue shortfall predicted for this year has gone up slightly and that's roughly about $102 million based on the actions taken in the budget. But the expenditure shortfalls, the appropriation shortfalls have actually have fallen due to departments' ability to go through their accounts, look for savings, and so that amount has come down quite a bit. So overall, the revenue shortfall is roughly about $103 million and expenditures below appropriation, appropriated amounts is $125, which leaves us roughly about $23 million there. Now, as part of the year-end report, we had recommended that we would be balanced, assuming that we make a transfer, a second transfer from the special parking revenue fund of roughly $38 million. And with that transfer, then we wouldn't be made whole, per se, for this fiscal year and would be able to achieve the numbers as projected as far as the reserve fund by the end of the year. You know, there's some questions. We'll talk about that report in just a little bit. Certainly going forward, we have many challenges. We need to make sure that our reserve fund is built as we go into the new fiscal year, '09-'10. There's been discussion on cash flow and trying to come up with a cash flow projection for next year and then working with the controller's office and trying to set that up as we go forward, both in our planning and looking at our payroll. But also, we need to get that cash flow schedule set up so we can actually go out to the market and borrow roughly about $1.1 billion to do our short-term borrowing for next year. As we go forward next year, certainly, we know we're going to have challenges down the revenue side. We've seen those challenges this year and in fact, over the two years with the revenue declines, as we've mentioned, some of the base revenues are roughly close to $290 million in those core revenue categories, property, sales, business, et cetera, et cetera. And so while it's been a challenging year this past year, next year will just, will be as challenging before. And we hope, as many of the economists are now looking at some perhaps upturn, uptick in the third quarter of this calendar year, we hope that plays out, but certainly it will be challenging with our revenue categories.
Could you give us, also remind us, what are some of the issues that during this '08-'09 fiscal year are the techniques we use to reduce the spending within that fiscal year to, I believe, over $100 million less expenditures than we had projected?
I think that amount has really been the work of the mayor and council and departments. They have scrubbed accounts. We did transfer money from our departments to help close the gap roughly about mid-year. Departments, we've had the very strict managed hiring process, so we really have clamped down on the hiring in departments and there's been many departments that have been concerned about that. But it's been through the efforts of everyone combined in order to reduce our expenditures, which has allowed us to achieve $125 million in savings.
And then where would this report put us as a reserve fund?
This report, we estimate that reserve fund balance at year-end will be roughly $217 at June 30th.
At June 30th. And then would you explain to us as to if we approve this report in total, what impact would it make on '09-'10 budget that becomes effective July 1st?
As far as this year-end financial status report, it basically puts us, it closes this year. It closes us in the sense that allows, we are expected reversions that will go to the reserve fund. We hope to have the $217 and it puts us in a solid footing as we go forward next year. Now, certainly for next year, there is the $320 million as part of the budget, the shared sacrifice, which is essentially a salary reduction in all departments. We still are going to have to, as we go forward, reduce our payroll in order to achieve that $320 million savings. So with that, we certainly still have too many people on the payroll at this point and we'll have to reduce the numbers as we go forward.
And also, just to make it clear, if there's alterations made on number eleven that actually removes money or adds money to it, it would impact '09-'10 budget? Or in the sense you would not be able to close out the books with those deficits, but it would move over to the next fiscal year?
I think there's been some miscellaneous changes to deal with payroll shortfalls in the last couple of weeks, but as I understand it, as long as the special parking report is approved, then we would end the year in a good spot where we project. If there's concerns on item ten, then naturally that would change some of those numbers.
And if there's concerns about item ten, that would impact the reserve fund more than anything else?
That is correct.
Okay. So any dollar moved out of number ten is a dollar moved out of the reserve fund?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Colleagues, on item eleven, I would ask that we vote yes on that and move it forward, understanding that on number ten, we'll get into now an explanation, pardon, the explanation of what the special revenue parking fund means as it relates to the general fund and the reserve fund. And just also bring your attention to number eleven A. These were funds that were moved last Friday because departments could not make their payroll and so it's just a matter of correcting the report for those amendments. And so now, if we move to number ten, Ray, if you could explain to us, and also there's a ten A that also should be discussed at this time.
Okay, sure. As we discussed this previously, in order for us to balance this year, we released a report regarding a declaration of special parking revenue surplus. And this amount was roughly $38.7 million. This is looking at accounts across the city that were project previous projects. There's been some savings or some money that have been not utilized for a number of years. We're also proposing a swap of some special parking, basically cash in the special parking revenue fund and actually transferring that to NICA. This is the Vine Street project. We're also recommending that for the IESO project as well, almost $6 million. This is in order for us to free up the cash in SPRS, SPRF, in order for us to transfer into the budget in order to make it whole.
Okay. Colleagues, the reason on number ten, I want to bring your attention to ten A, that identifies funds that are currently in local special revenue parking districts that are being swept because of, they're not earmarked, they're not designated. One of the things we asked the CLA, the CAO to do during budget hearings was to create a policy for the future that when these funds are taken, that there's an expectation of a payback and view them as a loan as opposed to a sweep. So that's something that will be coming forth for the council to approve in the future, but we've asked the CAO in the sense of looking at that very shortly to bring that forward to the council. The main issue on ten, understanding that it basically balances the budget for the end of year, is that the finance committee struggled with the issue of looking at two projects that roughly run about $22 million. And the concern was is that they're already designated to be, expend special parking revenue funds to pay for them, although the IESO project may require some small NICA funds to get it completed. The issue that we're concerned with is removing cash dollars out of the special parking revenue fund that are designated to complete projects, moving it into the reserve fund so that we can have a reserve fund that's higher and maybe more positive as it relates to our cash flow and for next year. But in turn, we're replacing it with NICA money to pay for these two projects on a credit card. And are we willing to spread it over a 20-year period somewhere in the neighborhood of $22 million to pay by NICA? Or should we spend our money as it relates to buy cash for the intended purposes of the special parking revenue fund? The concerns that were expressed at the committee were issues such as, we've just been put on notice by the bond industry that our cash flow in the sense of revenue was dropping. We also were put on notice that our issue bond debt had increased 20-some percent during the last year. And we're also in the midst of looking at a trans in which we have to have some ability to show that we're going to be able to pay this back. My concerns is that we start off the new fiscal year with a $22 million NICA debt that will go over somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 years. Debt financing, if I'm close, is somewhere around 10% in that general area over the 20 years. Is that fairly close?
I'm sorry?
10% of what we bond for is what the debt service would be over that period?
The debt service on that, I mean, if it's long-term, I mean, we're looking at probably, in today's market, probably a good 5%.
5% as far as the?
Over the, whatever the life that we want to advertise, whether it's 10 years or 20 years, but yeah.
All right. So the key for us, the decision we make today is whether we want to spend $22 million on these projects and there's no disagreement, they should go forward. And then spending the $22 million, should it come from a source of a credit allocation from NICA to put the cash money into the reserve fund? Or do we spend the cash money as intended to complete these projects? And that's the decision the Budget and Finance Committee sent it forward with no recommendation, but wanted to get the views of the council to provide the direction from, to the CAO, particularly in light of this critical 30-some million dollar allocation is critical to the closeout for this fiscal year. And so that's the discussion that's before us, is how do we want to fund these two projects?
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry?
That's okay.
Ms. Perry?
Yeah, thank you.
You're up.
Thank you. Sorry. This is with respect specifically to ten. I know we're doing ten and eleven together and I recognize that we have a larger policy question regarding the use of special parking revenue funds and NICA. But I just wanted to stress for the record that the parking structure intended at First and Judge John IESO is important to the Little Tokyo community and the Arts District communities and was, as we agreed, the city agreed to be one of the mitigation measures that was part of the police headquarters development. This parking structure was handled in the same environmental impact report as the police headquarters and is fully entitled, designed and ready to be built. The project is ready to move forward and remain fully funded. We expect to start construction in August. I hope that the council will honor this agreement that the city made along with the Bureau of Engineering because we've all worked diligently to ensure that the parking structure, and I say this for the record so that there's no confusion down the road, First and Judge John IESO will be available to the public as soon as possible because we did make this community commitment and it needs to be kept. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I want to speak to specifically the ITA department. And can you bring us up to speed as to whether add in their current fiscal year and what their anticipated deficit is for the upcoming fiscal year?
I think they are actually projecting some savings in the current fiscal year, though going forward and next year, given the numbers and reductions in their departments, I believe the number is upwards. They've reported upward of $6 million perhaps shortfall for next year in their salary account and perhaps in other accounts. I think there is a proposal to actually, to use some of the savings this year to perhaps be re-appropriated next year to help deal with next year's projected shortfall at this point.
The, I'm sorry, what was the last thing you just said?
I think there's been a proposal to have roughly some savings this year be re-appropriated next year to offset some of the reported shortfalls for ITA.
And that amount is approximately?
I've heard an amount of 1.5, thereabouts. I think much of it has to do with what the department, the contracts that can be covered against now versus what will actually be re-appropriated.
Okay.
Or could be re-appropriated.
All right. And when it comes to the amount of reductions that have been made to this particular department as far as positions, unfilled positions being negated and also when it comes to layoffs, how has their participation been as far as you understand?
Their participation, based on the adopted budget, ITA did take, I'll say, a significant hit in regards to positions being deleted. We also have the salary reductions that were imposed as well. ITA does have a salary savings rate and I don't recall exactly what that amount is, but all of the vacant positions were swept. So they are very constrained next year.
How much time?
They're very constrained next year in dealing with, well, I'll call positions and employee changes and dealing with the salary amounts that were reduced from their budget for next year.
It's my understanding of the first identified 76 layoffs citywide, they're taking a hit for 22?
Yes.
And how many departments, roughly how many departments are we talking about absorbing 76 layoffs? Two departments, five departments, a dozen departments?
I don't have the list in front of me, but I believe of the 76, there are two departments that are absorbing the bulk of it and that's ITA and GSD. I believe ITA was 22 and GSD was 30.
Okay. So we have a department that's, seems to be accepting giving up 22 positions and layoffs out of 76 citywide. And that same department seems to have shown tremendous efficiencies to the point where they actually have about 1.1 to 1.5 million in the current budget year made available, either to the department or the city, however we policymakers choose to handle that money, correct? So that's accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I have some more questions. I'll push my button again. Well, we will acknowledge you, Mr. Cardenas.
Okay, I'm next?
Next time.
I'm sorry?
You want more? You got 48. You want more?
Okay. I saw my time going away quickly.
Time's still going.
All right. Thank you. So is the department head here for ITA?
Okay. I just need one of you, I just have one quick question. Hello, your name for the record, please?
Randy Levin, General Manager, Chief Technology Officer, the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Randy. I just wanted to make sure our numbers are in line. What is the potential deficit, the lower amount? Obviously, there's moving parts, but is it approximately $6.4 million right now for the upcoming budget year?
It's actually $12.3 million.
If, but on the lower end, if in fact...
Yes, yes, 6.4.
6.4 is best-case scenario.
Correct.
Just put it that way. Okay. And then also for the current year, the budget year, where you're in '08, '09, what is the amount of anticipated revenue savings? Is it 1.1? Or what's the figure we're looking at?
It's actually 2.2 million.
Can you clarify for us how you arrived at 2.2?
Yes, there, in the '08, '09, we have 1.1 million. And that is in our salary account. And so we'd like to get that re-appropriated. And then what we're doing is we're paying down and pre-encumbering or encumbering additional funds. And then the rest of that can be rolled into next year.
Okay. So the CIO, do you recognize that 2.2 or is that figure differ in your mind?
Right, is it on the sheet?
Yeah. That's what Jacob and Laura have been working on.
Yes, yes. It is 2.2. Okay, it is 2.2. And that 2.2 is, has it formally been recognized in the coming budget year for purposes of usage? I mean, obviously, any money that is realized, I'm sure we'd like to sweep it. But when it comes to the budget process we just finished, of that 2.2, how much of that is actually recognized and accounted for?
It has not been formally recognized, but we do assume a reversion amount, that's citywide though of, I want to...
What's the number?
25 million, yes. Basically, citywide, we assume a total reversion amount from all general funds.
But that's in generic terms. We don't know if 100,000 is coming from this department or 3 million is coming from that. You're right, it could be 50,000 from mine and some, yes. Okay. Alright. So the, to the, Randy, to you, when was the last, the last acknowledgement or information that you received about your next year's budget? When was the last time you received information that you would be cut even further? And how much was that amount?
That was about two weeks ago, and we had another $2 million cut in our salary account. And so thus creating a $12 million deficit in our salary account.
Okay. Now, when it comes to your department and your responsibilities, are your responsibilities growing? Or are they staying stagnant or are the responsibilities decreasing?
Actually, our responsibilities and our requests are increasing, given the fact that other departments are cutting back, puts increased pressure on IT to deliver more services out to the public and out to the other departments.
So just so people understand, when, your department covers information technology just for one department of the city, like Recreation and Parks? Or your responsibility is to respond to pretty much all the departments in the city when it comes to this particular technical responsibility?
To the entire city.
Okay. And it's also my understanding, colleagues, that we have made a commitment to ourselves that we shall have an information technology department that's actually going to take on more and more and more responsibilities rather than be scattered. Most government organizations in the past have in fact been scattered. And I think it's without question that that method of allowing ourselves to be scattered like that is in fact incredibly inefficient. Do you think that's an accurate statement to the CIO?
I think as we have looked at IT services and the pendulum has swung in early, back in the 90s, it was very centralized. That pendulum has swung, ah, sorry.
Take your time.
To basically decentralized type of approach. And all of these IT services and groups have formed in other departments. And now it's time to go back to a more centralized approach to our IT.
And the purpose of that is for more efficiency, correct? Is more efficiency in time and effectiveness, but also in dollars?
It's time, efficiency, centralization, you know, it's just taking, utilizing our equipment, our network resources much better.
And one thing that people need to understand, it's not like your computer at home where your neighbor knows how to tinker with them and it kind of messes up and you call them over and they might kick it a little bit or what have you and get it going again. This is a much more sophisticated process and program that we have with the city. For example, what is the infrastructure of the city, Randy, when it comes to IT? Is it in the hundreds of millions, is it a billion dollars? What infrastructure are we trying to support?
Oh, you know, over time, it must be about a billion-dollar infrastructure. I mean, there's a huge, a huge public safety component of all of this with microwaves, radios, you know, in addition to just the regular city network and PCs and software. So there's, there is a huge public safety component that we support as well.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, I would like to offer an amendment to this item, which is to reapportion all the unspent balances in the ITA expense accounts that were outlined, the 2.2 million to the, to the fiscal year 910 Fund of 100 slash 321010 salary account. Thank you.
Is there a second?
The 2.2 million that we were talking about a minute ago.
Re-appropriated, yes.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Cardenas looking for a second on his motion.
Weezer's second.
Mr. Weezer?
He went like this.
Mr. Garcetti?
He's a gambler.
Somebody's Weeze...
Okay, Garcetti said he...
Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Weezer, okay, we have our second, thank you. Okay, Mr. Alakon.
Yes, my questions are related to item number 10. I'm just, as I'm understanding this motion, we are, can you hold my time?
Sorry. I apologize.
As I understand item number 10, we are using our MICLA credit card to enhance our reserve.
In order for us to close, that is correct.
In order what?
In order for us to balance the current budget.
Can you raise the mic and speak into it?
There we go. In order for us to balance this year's budget, we were recommending roughly 38 million to be transferred in to cover our revenue shortfall.
So that's a yes? Yes, we're using our MICLA credit card to enhance our reserve fund.
Essentially, as the money flows in, yes, if we balance and that we leave the reserve fund as is, if we don't, then we hit the reserve.
But even though we have the money in the parking revenue fund to cover the cost of these projects, we're going to use a credit card?
That is correct.
What is, what was the interest rate? You said 5%?
If we go long-term, it's roughly about 5% right now.
5% and how much, how much money is that going to cost us in 30 years?
Over the 20 years...
20 years, I'm sorry.
Probably with a 20-year term, anywhere from 1.2 to 1.4 in debt service.
I've never seen things amortized so well. I would think it would be at least three or four million. Over 20 years, 5%? On about 22 million, I think it would, 22 and a half million? And you're saying that's only going to cost us, actually, that's 5% flat? I don't understand how you can calculate that.
Well, depending on the actual rate, I mean, it's, on 22 million dollars, it's going to probably be anywhere, I would say roughly about 1.3, 1.4 in debt service per year.
Oh, per year?
Per year, yes. For over the 20-year period.
So I'm sorry, so we're talking about 40 million? It's going to, this, this action is going to cost us 40 million to get 22 and 0.5?
It will, it will not be 40, but it will be over the 20-year period, the 1.4. And that's somewhere in the range of 20, let me write that out real quick, but it's probably less than 30 million.
Okay, so the cost per year over 20 years will be 1.4 million. So 400,000 times 20 years is 2 million bucks. Is that, because I'm assuming that's the interest.
I'm sorry?
I don't know, that's, that's, that seems, now how does that, is that going to affect our credit rating?
No, I don't believe so. If I may back up, as part of the, as we went through the budget discussion this year, we reduced the MICLA allocation to projects substantially from the prior year from roughly 169 million to 100 million or so. We had already discussed using the Vine Street money in SPRF and converting that to MICLA. We discussed that back in the media report in March. And we did not provide a formal recommendation at that time until we had a chance to go through the SPRF monies to see how much we actually could free up and then transfer in. What is being added on to this discussion is the AISO project, the additional 6 million that would add basically to the 16.5 that we discussed earlier as one of the proposals that we'd floated back in March in order to close.
I'm just not clear on why we should be using an interest-bearing form of payment when we have the cash. It doesn't make sense to me. And...
It does boil down to a policy discussion of whether or not you would like...
Well, it's more than that. The intent of MICLA was to be used for certain things. And when you stick it in the reserve fund, the category is much broader than what MICLA was intended to be used for. So it's essentially supplanting using MICLA dollars to cover the reserve fund, which it was not intended to do. And, and that is a tricky way to do it. Now, we pulled up the ordinance and I know, or the ad code, and I know that we have the authority to declare the surplus by, but essentially, we're declaring a surplus by moving MICLA money in, which is going to move out to the reserve fund, which I say is, is playing fast and loose with the taxpayers' dollars and with the intent and spirit of MICLA. I'm not saying, I haven't been, I've been around a few years and I've seen this happen everywhere I've been. But, but I'm not sure that in this economy, this is the smart thing to do, creating more debt for the future when we can't figure out where the revenue is going to be coming from. And so I think it's, next year, we're probably going to be scrambling to figure out what we're going to do because we tapped out all our resources again. And I just don't think this is a smart way to treat our future. I don't see this economy improving in the next couple of years. And I challenge anybody to tell me how they see it improving in two years. So I don't think we ought to be using a credit card at this particular time.
Mr. LeBonge?
Thank you very much. I think the, in following up Mr. Alakon's, the economy, it's, and this, someone else said this, I'm using the term, but it's a reset. It's not a normal cycle. This is not a recession, so all things are on the table as far as trying to survive. I just had a couple of questions, Mr. CIO, and I thank you and your staff. When it lists here on item number 10, instruction number seven, lot 694, do you know lot 694? You can hold my time, just a bit.
Your time's being held, Mr. LeBonge.
Thanks.
Yes. Larchmont Village.
So there's 4 million in that account now?
How many is in that account?
The Larchmont Village account, Janice Chang, Office of the CIO.
I can't hear you, I apologize.
The Larchmont Village account is about $4,500.
Why does it say 4 million here? Am I need my glasses? Am I need my glasses?
Yes. You threw me there with the 4 million, I'm sorry.
Can someone give Mr. LeBonge a pair of glasses?
I got it right now. Thank you very much. All of these here, which add up to any, any of this money that was come, were from the operation of the parking structure itself. So this is not the parking meter money that's on the street. This is the parking structure itself.
The funds in these accounts are not necessarily from specifically parking structures or parking meters. Specifically for Larchmont Village, this was a, a lot resurfacing and maintenance.
Maintenance of the facility.
Correct.
And any issues in the past where there were monies loaned to different parking districts, is that accounted for? Is that history or is it?
Well, I think one of the recommendations that we provided in here, I believe it's recommendation 14, was basically for all of those accounts where we're asking for the cash, that basically we sort of keep those on the books per se. And at some point when we have revenue, then we can put the cash.
Right. I just would hope that we honor those loans and other commitments that were made through the time that probably was put on a piece of paper in no formal way as things were done at that time. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge.
Mr. Cardenas?
I just wanted to clarify my amendment, and that is up to 2.2 million. Yes, thank you. Obviously, if the number is above that, then we can have that policy discussion in the Budget Committee, but up to 2.2 million in those savings.
And I said in case, in case ITA has ability to encumber some money now so that it might exact...
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parks? You look like you have another question.
No, let me say, Mr. President, I would, I have no other question. I think we've gone over this with great depth. I think, I think the real issue for us all is that on number 11, I think clearly we have to close out this year's budget. We have to be sensitive to the reserve fund. But on item 10, if I understand the math, it would cost us roughly 6-point-something million dollars more to put it on a credit card as opposed to spending the money as it is intended in the special parking revenue fund. Again, my personal recommendation is that even though it impacts negatively on the reserve fund, is to move forward and to have those two projects go through the special parking revenue fund, take the hit on the reserve fund. And then also, it should impact us positively on our bond rating down the road that we're not adding, 22-plus million dollars in debt service starting the fiscal year. So that would be my recommendation. And I'd also ask, and a direction that we add to the CIO, that within the next 30 days, we get the issue of the policy statement for the council to evaluate and approve that deals with the loan of future special parking revenue funds so that council districts are not concerned that when it's swept, they're not getting them funds back.
Okay. Thank you.
The ordinance backs.
Mr. Clerk, that matters now before us, both those items?
If council wishes to take up both items at the same time, they may.
You want them separate, Mr. Parks?
Yeah, separate.
Separate, okay.
So the council wishes to take up item 10 first?
Mr. Alakon wants to know what we're voting on. We've got the two items before us. Ms...
Item 10 is now before the council, moved by Councilmember Parks.
Do them separate, 10 and 11 separate. Mr. Alakon, are you clear now?
Item 10 is now before you, which is the, was moved by Mr. Parks to move the recommendations to the CIO with the amendment, item 10A.
No, no.
Mr. Alakon, you need further clarification? Mr. Parks?
Well, that wasn't, I think the issue 10 impacts 11. And my motion was to move forward with the recommendations in 10 with the exception that we pay for these two projects out of the special parking revenue fund versus out of MICLA. That would be an amendment, a verbal amendment to the report. That was what I was recommending that the council approves as opposed to what's articulated in the report.
Okay, Mr. Alakon, okay now.
And we also have 10A, which I would also believe that we should approve.
Mr. Parks, I think we have it clear now?
Yes.
So number 10 is before us?
As amended, as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Very well. Item 11 now. As amended. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Very well, thank you. Item 9, please.
If I may request that 11 go forthwith.
11 forthwith.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
10 forthwith.
And 10 forthwith also?
Yes, please.
10, 11 forthwith, thank you. And let's go to number item 9, please.
Item 9 was being held on the desk, and there are many motions, 9A and B, that have been circulated.
It's hard to hear you.
Ms. Perry?
Okay.
9A, 9B?
Uh, this is the 16?
Special events?
Okay. Do you want to make a, you want to say something? Yeah, I just wanted to say a few quick words. Thank you very much, and we did this as a rule 16 because the Lakers Parade will take... I know, we're not going to discuss the motion, I'm just stating.
Mr. Garcia, for clarification?
Okay. Proceedually, folks, anybody can always stand up. We do it written, but anybody can stand up and make motions. That's what we're doing. So, there happens to be a written rule 16 motion, I think, that Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks are just going to describe what it is. We can't debate it today, it'll be on in two days, but she's going to describe it.
Yeah, and I'm not going to go into the details other than to describe what is before you, and it is the rule 16 regarding the Lakers Day Parade and Rally on Wednesday, June the 17th, and I'm hoping that it will be calendared for next Tuesday and not this Friday. That will give us a little bit more time to have a full accounting of actual costs incurred from various departments that will be involved, DOT, police, and street services, just to name a few of them, and this will give us an opportunity to have a full discussion on this.
And that matter will have passed by next week?
It will be on next Tuesday.
It'll be on next Tuesday's agenda.
That's what I'm requesting.
All right. Mr. LeBonge?
Question, Ms. Perry. Are the department general managers going to say, if people are working tomorrow, are they going to try to charge their time for their normal workday to a parade, or are they going to serve the city well and celebrate the Lakers victory?
Before I answer that, I need to get something from the city attorney about whether...
City Attorney, a clarification on this, please.
Ms. Perry is merely announcing her rule 16, and so there shouldn't be a discussion on this unless certain findings are made.
Okay. So, but second, I ask you, Mr. City Attorney, are these issues going to be covered by the cost of people who are normally working? I'm a little confused that they're saying it's a million dollars when people are working every day. So, we have the idea...
The motion will be on next Tuesday's agenda, and that would be a fine time to ask those questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. Item number 9 is before us.
Item 9 was being held on the desk, called special by Councilmember Hahn, and amending motions 9A and 9B have been circulated.
Ms. Hahn?
Councilmembers, I think I would like to move that we send this one more time back to committee. There's still some issues that we need to work out before we adopt this as an ordinance. Can I get a second on that?
Mr. LeBonge, seconds? A Mr.?
I'm going to come, I'm going to help you.
Hold on. Mr. Smith's now up for the queue. Mr. Smith?
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have one big problem, and that is we assumed a 2.5 million dollar cut in this funding program in the budget. If you refer this any further, we are creating a 2.5 million dollar additional hole in the budget where we don't have any money at all. The 2.5 million dollars converts to about 50 more employees get laid off if you don't take these actions today. Now, I understand you may have some issues about procedurally how we make it work, and if we can work those out separately, I have no problem referring those technical issues back, but the budget hole has got to be filled, and we cannot wait any longer. This has been here for three years, folks. This is not a new issue. Some of you, it's new to you because you haven't been watching this, but it's been here three years.
Yeah, I know.
Okay? I'm sorry if you don't like it. Your staff has been informed of these changes. This is a second reading, this came up a week ago. Okay. The changes have been, were approved in committees months ago. So, the committee, the Budget Committee passed a budget predicated on the cuts. If you want to talk about the technical issues of how we make that work, if we can separate that, and I'll take a quick look to the budget chair, see if we can do that, but we cannot do it in a way that jeopardizes the funding element of it. That must remain at a 50% reduction. That must remain, or you create a new budget hole, and you can't do that. We can't afford these kind of things anymore. It's impossible. And so, once upon a time, we could say, refer it back to committee, we're not worried about the problem of 2.5 million dollars, we'll do it in the reserve fund, we'll do it here, we'll move it, there is no money to move. We're talking about running out of cash in a few months. In just a few months, we run out of cash. So, folks, be careful what you do today. We must fix this problem in the budget. If you want to take it with the other issues, remove those elements out of this ordinance today then, and we'll come back and talk about that separately. But we must do the budget today, we must pass an ordinance today, reducing the money at least.
Thank you. We now have Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Parks, Mr. Alakon, Mr. LeBonge, Mr. Rosenbaum, Ms. Hahn. So, Mr. Cardenas?
The City Attorney, I'd like to ask the City Attorney some questions. And when he's speaking, if he can speak on his time, and when I'm speaking, if I can speak on my time. Now, when it comes to this particular procedure, the way it's written right now, and say somebody wanted to have a special event in which the city would pick up some of the costs, what's that procedure today? They would talk to a council member, they would talk to the department? How would that work?
I believe, excuse me, I believe that the way the procedure works now is the council member introduces the motion, so they approach the council office right now.
You don't know how it works.
No, 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 we're not talking about today. I'm talking about what we're talking about here, the new language, starting July 1st.
The ordinance, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I mean, I like what you said, I would prefer to just keep it like that, but we're not, so...
Right. The ordinance would require that the application be filed with the Street Service Bureau.
Okay.
And that would include if, if the applicant wanted a waiver of the, or a subsidy of the fees, of the costs, up to 50%, then they would include a request for that subsidy at the time that they filed the application. If the application is approved and the event qualifies as a non-commercial and the entity is a nonprofit entity, then they would qualify for the subsidy automatically.
Okay. So, the department would be receiving the request directly?
Yes.
And the department would be communicating only, technically speaking, only with the constituent or the party that is actually requesting that up-to-50% fee waiver?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, and there are two exceptions, and that's block parties and farmers markets would get 100% subsidy.
Okay. And then, on top of that, is there any reason why the procedure rolling forward come July 1st in this ordinance does not include involvement of the council offices?
Well, actually, it does include involvement of the council offices in that it requires that the Bureau notify the council offices, as well as all the other offices and departments that are affected by the event, notify them immediately of the receipt of the application and seek their input. In terms of whether the event impacts the community adversely, how that adverse impact should be addressed, whether there be conditions on the permit itself, or if the conditions are not accepted, whether the permit should be denied. So, there's that provision for input by the individual council offices, yes.
Okay. Now, when it comes to legal, for legal purposes, to what, to what degree does the council office have discretion to say, well, we can't support that event? That event doesn't make sense? And then let the department know, no, don't give them, don't give them the 50% cut?
If you mean support the event in terms of funding?
Yes, by giving them a 50% reduction.
You're right. The ordinance provides no discretion in that regard for the council office. The events are supposed to be treated, the applicants are supposed to be treated on an equal basis, and it's based on the equal protection clause of the Constitution. They're supposed to be treated on an equal basis so that if they meet the criteria for the funding, they qualify and they automatically get it. If they don't meet the criteria, they don't. But there's no discretion beyond that that can be placed on any one individual to deny funding for a particular event.
Okay. So, I'll give you an example. Is this, how does this apply to the equal protection litmus test? If somebody wants to have an event and close off Osborne Street on a Sunday in my district, and then another person wants to have an event on another day on Gaines Street in my district, are those equal protection, like-for-like? Or does it matter that one's a four-lane highway versus a residential street, interior street, or things of that nature?
Well, I think it absolutely matters, but that's exactly the type of fact that the department is supposed to hear comments on, the impact on the community, the impact on traffic, the impact on noise, the impact on the residents, whether they had, they've had a series, the residents have had a series of events, and this unduly subjects them to too much noise and too much stress and too much disruption to the community. All those can be taken into account. That doesn't go necessarily to the funding.
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
That doesn't go to the funding necessarily, it goes to whether or not the permit is issued or whether it's conditioned in some way.
Okay. So, are there two separate processes there? One is the issue of whether or not that activity should be taking place without funding, and then the second layer is whether or not it can be, should or could be considered for some kind of subsidy up to 50% of the fees?
I think for, for analysis purposes, yes, I think those two questions can be separated.
Okay. Now, the first question about whether or not that activity should take place, again, that's up to the street services or that's up to the council office?
With input from the council office and from any other office or department that's involved, including LAPD, including DOT, whomever's involved.
Mm-hmm.
Well, input is not absolute, absolute power to decide. It's input from the council office.
So, the current system we have right now, who makes the decision?
I'm sorry?
The current system we have right now, before this ordinance that we're contemplating passing, who has the ultimate decision?
As I understand the system, and I could be wrong, as data be corrected, but as I understand it, the decision whether or not an event is to occur and to be funded initially is made by this body when the council member brings a motion forward.
By the form of a motion, therefore?
In the form of a motion, in the hands of the council slash... That's my understanding.
A particular council member that puts a motion forward.
Correct.
So, come July 1st, if we pass this ordinance, basically we'll have a procedure where it's the department that makes the decision.
The block party group goes to the department directly and says, we want a permit for this type of event on this date, and we think we qualify for a subsidy, so we'd like a subsidy as well.
Okay.
And the department notifies the individual office as well as other departments and offices.
And the current system that we're, excuse me, not the current system, the motion that's before us, we are talking about an annual amount of money? Is it broken down by quarter? Is it, is it, is there any delineation as to whether or not it's broken down on a timely basis, or we could commit 12 months' worth of money in one month if we get that many applications?
It's, excuse me, it contemplates that the council will determine how the money is allocated throughout the year, but yes, it's an annual amount. It can be, it can be identified and allocated by, on a quarterly basis, so that no more than a certain amount is spent each quarter. And I think that there's a lot of latitude available to the council to do that. So, for example, if a certain council office knows that in the second half of the year, you have most of your events in that district, you could attempt to allocate more money towards the second half of the year rather than the beginning. The allocation and the budgeting of the funds is still in the discretion of the council, it's not dictated by the ordinance itself or by any other power.
So, we could amend this motion right now and say, the money shall be distributed no more than on a quarterly basis?
I believe you can do that at any time. If this ordinance were to be adopted now, you could do that at any time and on a year-by-year basis.
But we could amend this ordinance right now with that kind of motion? Amendment?
Well, what I'm saying is the ordinance doesn't need to be amended to accomplish that. If the ordinance is adopted, that, the distribution of the funds throughout the year can be done on an annual basis?
Yeah, but I don't know how long you've been around this building, Mr. City Attorney, but to actually get to a motion and then actually have it happen is going to be after July 1st. So, if we amended it right now, it would be much more intact with that amendment, and therefore, come July 1st, we wouldn't have the problem of, oops, spending 12 months' worth of money in the first couple of weeks of July if we don't get around to amending it. That's what I'm talking about. I just wanted to know, legally speaking, we could amend it today. I appreciate your opinion that we don't have to, and we could do it later, but why put off for tomorrow what we can do today, is what I think.
Yes. All I'm suggesting is that if you incorporate that into the ordinance, there's a certain amount of flexibility that is lost by doing that. Then you're bound by the provisions of the ordinance to say unequal, assuming that the amendment were that the money is to be expended in equal quarterly amounts. Then you lose the ability later on, unless you amend the ordinance again with another ordinance, to say, the second year really is a heavier part of the year, you, for your district, or another member...
Trust me, whatever we amend it right now on the fly, we're probably going to end up amending it later.
And, and the ability to make those kinds of changes and the appropriation and the allocation of funds exists under the ordinance as it's written now?
With a motion.
With, or with...
At any time.
At any time.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pete, could you walk us through this whole issue of where we were at waivers and the legal issues that we had, we tried to resolve with the subsidy, and then the most recent case that restricted the issue of the subsidy having the discretion we thought we were going to get?
The issue, the issue with waivers of...
Have a hold my time?
Particular types of fees is that, is that, in many instances, some fees in particular are paid for services, and the waiver, the law requires that the fee that's charged needs to be allocated just to the cost of the services that are provided. And so, the mechanism of subsidy was developed for that very purpose. As we looked at the, at the situation with special events, the mechanism of subsidies makes not only practical sense but legal sense in terms of allocating the amounts of the support that will be given to the various, to the various events. It's simply a mechanism, one way or the other, to account for the support that the city would be providing.
But the legal issue puts us in a position that you can't discriminate from event to event, but we can designate funding over a period of time that may be unique to your district.
Correct.
So, if I want to use 40% of my money in November, December, I can give that direction to street services?
Yes.
And I can spread the other 60% as I see my events coming in?
Yes.
Okay? And they have the authority to spend that monthly allocation on those that qualify, but then if they run out of money, they merely let people know there's no other funding?
Yes, and in fact, the, the way the ordinance is written is that if there's, if the money is exhausted, then there's no obligation to provide a subsidy at all, there's no ability to do so, therefore...
Exhausted doesn't mean that the whole account is exhausted, it could be exhausted for that monthly allocation.
Correct.
Okay. And then also, in dealing with these circumstances, there's still a 50% on some of these special events, there's still 50% obligation by the person making the permit?
Yes.
So, they have, that's part of the qualifications?
Correct, with the two exceptions being block parties and farmers markets, although farmers markets, I understand, will be the subject of more discussion and maybe some changes as well.
And then also, the last part, on the list of citywide events, has that list, you've reviewed it, has that been completed?
My understanding is the CLA is still working with some of the council offices on it, and that will be part of a report from committee as well.
Okay. All right. Colleagues, I'd just like to say on this issue, this started, I think, when Ron Deaton was here and we thought we had it resolved several other times. We know that, and although we can dispute the figures, there's estimates of somewhere 4 to 5 million plus was involved with waivers. The issue here, we've already gone through a process that's been at least three or four years since I've been on the budget finance to get to this point. The budget includes this savings based on this process. It sets up the two funds. If we send it back to committee, we in effect have no process unless we go back to waivers. Mr. Alakon's motion certainly gives clarity as to the current situation as it relates to staff being available, but we have to also make clear that, starting July 1st, the subsidies are in play if we approve this. So, we have no other option except to move forward, work out the details, and I would, as suggested before, it's going to require individual office staffs to be more proactive in working with street services to get the projects or the events that you know that come up annually before their review so that they can get the consideration that's needed. And it's up to you to set up criteria as to how your money is spent, so you do have a lot to say, but once you establish the fund for that month, or for the year, you cannot individually pick and choose an event over another event. And so, it gives us the best of, I think, all worlds that we have input, we have the ability to set a structure, we have our staffs involved, and again, in the final analysis, we don't have any options if we don't pass it because there's no other system to deal with special events come July 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Alakon?
Well, first of all, I think there's a lot of questions about exactly how we operate in, with, if we were to pass this motion today. And so, I think we, the better part of wisdom dictates that we should continue to work on it. it. But I do recognize that we have a budget issue, and that, I don't think we would have any problem with passing the allocation and limiting the expenditure to whatever it was we limited to in the budget. So, that, I don't think is the question. The question is, is to what extent does the council member play a role with the community in conducting special events in the community? Now, you have said that these are just special events, but in a declaration of a special event, are we saying that the city of Los Angeles is a participant in the event? Or are we just saying that it's a special event and we can give money to it? Hold my time, please.
I, I'm, I'm not sure what the legal import is of a declaration of an event as a special event, unless the city is somehow devoting resources.
Why do we do special events? There must be some legal import.
I would leave it to the individual makers of the motions as to why it's being declared a special event. If there is a, it carries with it resources and staff, time, then it's a city special event in part.
I'm just wondering if we'd be hindered by the legal issues that you've raised, if the action, if the event that we were talking about had the participation of the city of Los Angeles?
Again, it depends on what that participation is.
Organizing.
City-sponsored events are defined in the ordinance as events which, to which the city commits resources or funding.
No, I didn't say city-sponsored, I said city participating.
I, I don't know what that means.
In other words, if an organization comes
Unless you tell me what it means, I don't know what it means.
If an organization comes to my office, wants to do an event, we work with them to do the event, then that would be a sponsored event. But if an organization who is working independent of the council office wants to do an event, then it's on them. Would that stand up to your legal issues?
If, if under the proposed ordinance.
No, I'm not talking about the proposed ordinance.
If there's a permit process by which these two entities, whether they work with the council office or not, can come and get a permit, they have to be treated the same for purposes of the permit. I, I apologize.
Even if, even if the city is participating in the event, organizing the event, working on the event?
If it is a city event, a city event, then it would qualify for the subsidy.
Okay, council members, I hope you're understanding the line of my question here, because I don't believe the, with all the experience Mr. Echevede has, I don't believe he's understanding the concept I'm presenting. What I'm suggesting is if the event is worked in cooperation with the council office, I think it changes the definition of what it is. It's an organized activity of council office, and I believe we can stand up to the legal issues. The, the, the question is, if anybody walks in the door and can get public funds, then you have to treat them all the same. But if they're, if it's an organization that is working directly with the council member's office, that is distinctly different, because it is an event of the city of Los Angeles. So, I believe that the legal issues would be different. So, I suggest that we send this matter back to committee to explore the feasibility of that concept. At the same time, though, and secondly, that we do put the money aside, or allocate the money that was budgeted, and only that money, no more. And thirdly, I think we should extend the period of, of the previous motion to allow us to declare special events under the old ordinance up until January 31st, to give the committee an opportunity to do the work and get it back. That would be my motion, and it's seconded by Janice Hahn.
July 31st.
I'm sorry, did I say, I meant July 31st, not June 31st.
June 30th, that's a tricky day, June 31st. All right, we have Mr. LeBons, Mr. Rosenthal, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Parks, so far. Mr. LeBons.
I think Ms. Hahn in conversation said, "This should not, if it is going to affect, absolutely not going to affect to July 5th, because of the 4th of July celebrations that are maybe competing." I understand that, but I'm just saying, it's important, there's a lot of, I've had calls from people. What I wanna do is celebrate Los Angeles, and I think there has to be a dividing line there. What, when Mr. Alakon was just talking, what if they opened up a new fire station, and we need to have a, a street closure for that? We gotta pay for that?
No, that's, that's a city event, that's
So, who, how, who we charging?
It's the city, the city spends its own funds.
Right, but I mean, it's just, I'm going out there, you're going out there, we'll set up the barricades, we dedicate the new fire station.
Correct.
Simple, we don't have to even, maybe not have to get a permit, right? It's a city event, right? I'm asking.
Correct.
Yeah, my concern is, I think there's an element here that's important. Our Department of Neighborhood empowerment is involved with our neighborhood associations. I went to the Brookside Neighborhood Association on Sunday, it was held on Muirfield Avenue in the Brookside Community between Wilshire and Olympic, and it was absolutely wonderful. It was just all neighborhood, nothing commercial about it at all. But I'm thinking, would these people be able to go through a complicated challenge of getting this done? They're all required to get a waiver for insurance, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
So, they come to that, then they're asked to spend more money to put up barricades to have a block party.
Put up 50%.
50%. See, I think we should decide on the neighborhood block party is a different thing than a, a Bank of America opening up on the corner, a movie company premiere. Absolutely should be no cost to someone who wants to celebrate their neighborhood, and there's no charge to it, it's wide open. So, I think I'm a little conflicted, because I'm, like many of us, are neighborhood people, would not wanna impede the neighborhood from having a neighborhood celebration.
If I may, neighborhood block parties are funded at 100%.
At 100%?
Under the ordinance.
100%?
Block parties are.
Okay, so we fund them at 100%.
Correct.
And Mr. Harris, good to see you. See, I would rather have our street inspectors going out giving zidagins to people who are not keeping their sidewalks clean or dumping trash in the gutter. I was at Franklin and Vermont this morning, in a horrible situation, but I did make a call to get that cleaned up. I don't wanna stop a freight train that's been going up the hill for six years, but at the same time, I don't wanna lose our ability to celebrate the city in a way, and from reading the ordinance, it takes it right out of our hands in a way, Gary, 'cause you may not have a complete understanding, you have a complete understanding of the municipal code, complete understanding of a multitude of the challenges that face the city, but when a group comes, I think it maybe needs to have some involvement with the Department of Neighborhoods, and also, the things I would wanna say, members, do we look at this instead of an even 15 split? Do we split it by the seven regions of the city? 'Cause some neighborhoods have more activity or another. What's the, what, does anyone have a, a report on what has gone on in the past? 'Cause I haven't seen it, if there is. Anybody have that? No one has that? So, we're all going on assumptions here. We don't know that there's been 425 block parties.
I, I'm sorry, I believe the CLA did a report that, that addressed
Well, I see Mr. Miller over there, is there a report, I don't know how to call you to the table, Jerry, but is there a report that says there's been 427 block parties, 29 movie premieres? There was that report, I just need that report. 'Cause I think it needs a little more review on this, 'cause you're not gonna even implement this thing to when?
30 days after it's approved by council, so.
No, you gotta publish it. You're ready to go 30 days in August or in September?
Well, we'll be ready to go as soon as council approves the personnel that's associated with the program. There are five positions that are associated with the one-stop permitting process, and so we are, we have hope that those will be also approved at the same time, so that we can move forth immediately.
That's already approved in the budget?
Mm-hmm.
It's already approved by the Personnel Committee, by Mr. Zein? Those positions, five hires for these positions?
Yes, those positions were in the budget, yes.
I know, but are those people there? If we're gonna make people do this, they're not there. Are they there?
They, they are not there yet, so.
Not there yet, now, if there's a hiring freeze, how are we gonna do it? So, these are some questions that I have, I think we just need a little more time to get up to the top of the mountain. I also would like the report, and I know I'm over time, I don't mean to be over this much, on the, what is the analysis of all the events in the city? Is there an analysis of all the events?
There is, my office provided that, a detail of every single event, special event in every council office.
I'm, I'm looking for it right now, and I do
We'll have, I'll have Ms. Carter get you a copy. It was distributed probably about six minutes ago.
Ms. Carter is a tremendous asset to the city.
Yes, she is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LeBons, Ms. Hahn is next.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Smith, I don't want to change the amount of the dollars that we're talking about, although I still think we based a policy on fake numbers, and you've got to admit that we never had an actual accounting for every special event that took place after the event. We made up numbers, guesstimates.
Somebody did.
Somebody did, on what we thought it cost. So, this idea that somehow we're saving, you know, $4 million in the budget, I think is not accurate, but that's okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let that go, because I can, I know there was a, a need for us to come up with the policy. But as we heard today, there are, what, we're trying to do more with less, or we're trying to do the same with less. All I'm concerned about is how do we take that, that 1.5 million and find a way to budget that, so that we can make sure that events that have gone on in our district will continue to be able to be funded 50%. We know everybody, except for block parties, are going to have to contribute 50%. I think we're gonna find a lot of organizations in our communities, particularly now, nonprofit groups, they're gonna find this to be prohibitive, and are gonna be, have a very difficult time coming up with that. And so, the idea of celebrations, the idea of people feeling good about living in Los Angeles, the ideas about trying to put on a little event are gonna be very burdensome. But I'm letting that go, because I feel like the will of this body is to have this policy. All I'm saying is, that last $100,000 that each of us are going to be paying the other 50%, I'm trying to find a way that we can budget that in our offices, so that events that we know take place from January to December, the best of our ability, we're gonna try to help them get that 50%. This policy does not address that. This policy says, this ordinance says, any, anybody can apply to street services to be this 50%, this half-funded, and according to the city attorney, they have to fund them. So, January through September, that might be all of your $100,000, folks, and so, all your events in, around Thanksgiving, all your events around Thanksgiving, the holidays, will not have that money. I just want everybody to understand that, because according to the city attorney, street services has to say yes, and they have to give the 50% fund. You're shaking your head, no, but that's what the city attorney has just said. Is that correct?
Correct.
Say that a little bit louder.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, we have no discretion. And by the way, this idea that street services is gonna notify us, you know, so far, I love street services, but they've done a very poor job of notifying my office about certain things. So, this idea that all these special events, as you guys know, we're, we sign these all the time down here, they come fast and furious, that street services is actually gonna notify me in time, so that we can have input into that event, it is not going to happen, and you know it's not. And you're not even, street service is not even ready to go right now with this ordinance. They are not ready. So, all I'm saying, colleagues, is I wanted to not deal with the money issue, that's fine, you've got that, but this idea of how do we budget this last $100,000 to 50% fund these events in our district, I would like to figure out how we can have more discretion, so that street services isn't the entity just automatically having first come, first served. That's what I'm trying to do, colleagues. I don't think a lot of us have paid attention to this, because of all the other big issues that we're grappling with right now in the city, and rightly so. But I believe this is gonna come back to hurt us from our nonprofits in our district, until we can figure out a way that we can take less, and we are doing less. We're gonna have less special events, the city is gonna fund less, but this last piece that we have, how can we budget that in our district, so that the majority of the events, effectively and fairly, not first come, first served, can be funded? So, Greg, if you say we can send that back to the committee to decide, okay, but I believe we need to get a handle on this, colleagues, because once we put this into an ordinance, I think it's gonna be very difficult to unwind it. So, I'm not gonna touch the money, I'm not gonna touch the, the budget, but how this money is spent is critical, colleagues, critical to the feeling of people having a fair, a fair shake in terms of getting their event funded, not first come, first served. So, if you'll allow me to send that part back to a committee, you know, maybe it's not a budget and finance issue, maybe now it goes to education and neighborhoods, because I believe these are, these are neighborhood issues, and it's beyond just block parties. Greg, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hahn, we have Mr. Cardenas for a second time, and then Mr. Parks for a second time. Mr. Cardenas.
Either the CLA, CAO, or city attorney, can you explain to me what item 9B, Amendment B, would actually, how would play out? As you read it here, it's one paragraph.
As I read it, 9B would, there's a moratorium currently on special events, motions or declarations by council.
As it stands today, it's a current moratorium.
Right.
So, part of the, the beginning part of this paragraph would say, "Continue that moratorium?" Talking about your mission.
I, I believe it was to, the, the moratorium is on events that would take place after July 1st, the funding for, this would change it, so that it would be for all events that would take place after July 31st. So, that the current place, the current policy would stay in place for declaration of special events and the funding for those events, for those events that occur until July 31st. Okay, that's my reading of it.
Mr. CLA, could you take a crack at explaining that?
I, I believe as I read it, that in essence, it is how we're operating, that fees will continue to get waived for any events that occur before July 31st, to give the time for the Bureau of Street Services to get the mechanism in place to launch the new mech, the program.
Okay, so, being that this would be an amendment to the motion, since it's not speaking to the budgeted amount for the coming fiscal year for this category of funds, this does not infringe upon the budget itself for the fiscal year?
That's correct, as I read it, yes.
Right? Okay, so, this doesn't interfere, Mr. Smith, with the actual overall budgeted amount, which we've been trying to get a handle on, and finally, this year, through the budget process, we seem to have gotten a handle on it, and put a finite amount of money as that's the cap for the year? Correct? Okay, their interpretation, Mr. Alakon, is that, is that correct? Okay, all right, good. Now, when it comes to Amendment 9A, that was submitted, I think, by Ms. Hahn, could you interpret for us what 9A would do?
The way I read the moving part, it would be essentially what the ordinance contemplates, except for the portion that says upon, the expenditure would be upon approval of the council member of the district.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's essentially that what's contemplated by the, by the ordinance in terms of the funding mechanism for these events, except that it would be, to be utilized upon approval of the council member of the district. That would be the significant change.
All right, now, 9A, you spoke, you and I had a dialogue earlier on this item, on who would be making the decision, the reason why I was asking you, our city attorney, is because obviously there's, you said, what, equal
Equal protection.
Equal protection. The way you read that amendment, on the face of it, is, is there a problem with equal, equal protection?
I believe that it's problematic and requiring the approval if it gives, and I believe it does give discretion to a council member to say no, without any articulable standards.
Now, you're anticipating there's potential for problems of that, or just on the face of it, the fact that the discretion is given, some discretion or this kind of discretion is given to a council office, that on the face of it is a problem?
Yes.
Or if it's exercised in a certain way, and then creates a problem?
The former. Well, both would create problems, obviously, but, but yes. The former. Well, both would create problems, obviously, but, but yes. This, this could be, this could be challenged on the, on the, on the face of it.
Okay. Have we been challenged on the current system we have?
Not recently.
Not recently?
No.
So we have been challenged, like, in the last 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years?
I recall the challenge many years ago to the council's decision not to fund, or to withdraw the funding, actually, of an event that was occurring at Pershing Square many, many years ago, on the basis of the content of the event.
That had a little caveat or twist in that that was funding that had been approved, and then it was yanked back.
Because of the content of the event, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm gonna need to try to understand your, your amendment. Well, I don't, I don't, I don't mind B, because like you were articulating, Ms. Hahn, it doesn't affect, one of the overall purposes today is to just finally get something in place where we, we cap ourselves, you know. Well, this one actually deals with what the city attorney talked about, and also, there is a reference in this. How do you interpret the reference of, of the, the paragraph when it comes to the transfer of 1.5 million dollars in, I'm talking about Amendment 9A?
It was, again, the ordinance actually states that the amount would be, no specific amount is mentioned in the ordinance, but it is in the budget, and so therefore...
Yeah, it's referencing the budget amount.
Because the council has to have flexibility to allocate what, appropriate whatever amount you will each, each year, and to allocate it, but it would be, an amount would be appropriated for the special event subsidies and split 15 ways among the various council districts. So that, again, this, this pretty much mimics that same concept. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parks, and then after that, we have Mr. Alarcon for a second time, and Ms. Hahn for a third.
Okay. Mr. Miller, could you, you commented on a report that the CLA office completed. Could you give us a summation, just briefly, on the number of events and also what you came up with as best figures you could as far as the cost?
Well, I don't, I don't recall, I haven't the total number of events, but it was broken down between festivals and street fairs, block parties, it was broken down with, with larger events, and it was broken down per district. The total amount that we spend, different figures are thrown around. The total amount of fee waivers every year is between 10 and 11 million dollars. However, about half of that are for, for First Amendment events, and those are not events that come through the council where you waive the fees. Those are separate and apart from what we're talking about here. The total number of, amount of fee waivers annually is roughly $5 million. Those are the events that come here through the council.
Okay.
And, and again, it was from, from a budgetary and policy standpoint, to cut that in half, and that's where the 2.5 million comes from.
And that report was done about six months ago?
I, I believe so. I think Ross can tell you exactly when it was done, but it was done about six months ago, yeah.
And from your understanding, how long has this special event policy been evolving in city council?
Eight years.
Eight years. Okay. The issue that we had explained earlier by Pete is how we move forward from waivers to subsidies, and it was a legal issue that drove us to that point. Is that right, Pete?
That's correct.
Okay. And Pete, you answered to Ms. Hahn's question, no, as it relates to, Street Services have the ability to last say on whether funds should be expended, but I'd just like you to expand, because you mentioned earlier, was that if the council office dictates the amount of funding per month, they can make a determination, a different percentage of their money being expended on a given month. So it's within that month they have the ability to say yes or no?
Yes. Essentially, it would be like an expenditure plan that departments come up with for the expenditure of their department funds. These, the council offices could come up with an expenditure plan allocating to the various periods in the year, the amounts that would be distributed to those periods.
Okay, so the only way that someone would exhaust their $100,000 if there was no plan?
Correct.
Okay, so the first $100,000 would be, well, you have to create one. No, I mean, each office has to create their plan. And I think that's, that's what we, that's how we manage the resource. I mean, so you've got $100,000 that each council office has to deal with. The other thing I'd just like to ask is that in dealing with this process, if this does not go forward, what are the options, in this year, what are the options available if this number nine is not approved? What is available for council offices that relates to special events?
Well, in, absent approving the ordinance today, the current system would stay in place, which means you continue to do the motions.
Okay, so we'd be moving back to waivers where we basically would be expending more money than what we have allocated in the budget?
Yes, I suppose as a policy, you could decide that you're only gonna waive half the fees, but, but there would be no ordinance in play, there would be no structure in place to do that. The, the system would, would be the same, and it would simply be a matter of motions continuing to go through the council.
Okay. Colleagues, I think that in going through this, what I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 9B and amend the, the committee report, but that we send 9A to committee for further review. And I'd also move that we ask the CLA and CAO to come back within the next 30 days with the former's market language, that we also direct the CAO and CLA to come back with the help of the city attorney, that we move forward on those major event discussions with the vendors so that we could have those contracts in place, and that also that the CLA have prepared for Monday's budget finance meeting, the list of citywide events available so that we can review that and get it to council. And fourth, that we ask the CLA, CAO, and the city attorney to discuss with LAPD the issue of First Amendment issues so that we have a better understanding, so that people will not circumvent this current system by creating this First Amendment issue and getting events basically put on in the community without any review. And so I'd ask that we move this item with those amendments.
Is there a second?
Second? Thompson? He moved one of them to committee, so that was a different move. So second, Mr. Smith, second. That was a, the, I believe, I believe that the motion, though, and not, not editorializing, I believe the motion, Mr. Parks, correct, was to pass B, send A to committee, and was there something else, Mr. Parks?
A to committee, B, B amend the current committee report.
Okay.
And then it gave four instructions.
The former's markets.
We asked the language back on former's markets. We asked also for major venues to have those discussions for those contracts. We also asked for the list of events for citywide be available for Monday's budget finance meeting, and we asked for the CLA, CAO, and the city attorney to work with the police department on First Amendment issues so there's some clarity as to when events are declared First Amendment.
Everybody clarifying? Mr. Okay. So it was move B to amend the committee report, send A to committee, and those reports back. Okay. And the committee report is still before us. Not, not a motion, but it's a committee report. If his motion failed, we take him up in reverse order. So in, you know, if the, other motions made, they can't be repetitive motions of earlier ones, but if another motion's made, that would be taken first. Right now, Mr. Parks' motion would be the first. If that would fail, then we would take up the motions individually, because his motion affected both of them. Okay. Mr. Alarcon's next, and then you, Ms. Hahn? Okay. Mr. Alarcon.
I don't know what the heck we're voting on. What? Okay. You want, Mr. Parks, you're asking to attach B to your report?
Yes.
So you want approval of the ordinance as written?
As written with the attachment 9B.
But why would, but they're, they're in contradiction.
No.
One, at least during the period of July, they would be...
The thing is, is the shortness won't be available for 30 days.
Because there's nothing available in July. No, okay. I oppose that motion because it doesn't deal with the core issue of who decides what special events are going to occur. Pardon me? No, my motion is merely for the period from July 1st to July 31st. No, I, I know it's an amendment to the motion, but I wanted to send, I wanted the issue of the, how the events are approved to be sent back to committee. But, but we still need to fill the gap, and that was the only way I could introduce it, Mr. Smith. So, members, if, if you want, Street Services, you know, the good people who do, I think, a good job to make all the decisions about events in your district, I, I think that's a very dangerous way to handle this. I, I do not wanna see, to be extreme, the Ku Klux Klan, other, you know, terrorist groups coming into our streets because they were first in line. I mean, that is not the way, that is not why we got elected. We got elected to make decisions, and we're held accountable to those decisions. If they don't like the events that I approve in my district, then unelect me. You know, that is their choice. But, but to say that we have to do it by whoever comes first in line, and any organization out there can have an event in your district with city money, if you don't think your, your voters are gonna have a bigger concern about some of those events than, than the issues as presented. I think the bottom line is, we did not figure out an alternative way to provide the council members with control of events, to allow them to, to choose events that the city would participate in or not, without having to allocate direct funding. I think, I think there's a way to do it, and I would reiterate, that the way to do that would be to say that the event is, it's not a, a special event to the extent that, that any organization out there can do, do an event without working with the city, but that they would have to work with the council office. And if they're working with the council office, then it's merely a city event, and we don't have the, the civil rights issues, I believe. But, but since we haven't had that analysis, I think it should go back to committee to make that determination, and I believe we can, we can avoid this, this, this problem. In the meantime, we, we need to pass Amendment B so that we do not have a problem with July 1st to July 31st. And with regard to reducing, we're not changing the allocation. Nobody's action is to increase the allocation. It remains the same, which is a reduction of 2.5 million, and so there's no, no problem with, with that. And so I think there's a better way to do it, Mr. Parks. That would be approve Amendment B, refer the rest of it back to committee.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
For the sake of clarity, we're going to, I would like to, to the extent possible, also have a level of discretion of how these funds are used, and who is on the street and who isn't, and that's where I'd like to be. So could anyone here at the table tell me what gets us there?
Well, I, I think Mr. Jafaria needs to address that. I can tell you that one of the things we've been doing over the last eight years is to try to address that very issue, is, is to try and give all of you as much discretion as possible with not running up, without running afoul of, of equal protection and, and legal issues. Now, the ordinance that is before you requires that anybody who is putting on a special event show, demonstrate that they have consulted with the council office before they come in and get a permit. Now, I recognize consultation and approval are two different things. I, I recognize that. But the ordinance does require, and, and I'm sure Ms. Carter can show you exactly where, it requires that anybody who submits an application to Street Services for a permit demonstrate that they have consulted with the council office. So...
Okay, so I wanna make sure I understand. Well, I wanna reaffirm the need to address the fiscal issue, so I don't wanna pretend that's not happening. So can we split this up? Can we divide this? And does our item 9B do that? Or does it just, it gives us time?
Well, 9B essentially makes it clear that the current process is in place until...
It's all my time.
Until the end of July, to give time for Street Services to set up the mechanisms to start processing the permits.
So if, if we go with 9B, we adhere to the fiscal discipline we need to have, which has been highly recommended by our colleagues who are suited on budget and finance, and just give us one more shot at trying to look at the discretion issue, 9B, for that one month period?
Well, I, I think, as I indicated, in essence, 9B, as a matter of practice, we're going to be doing anyway, because the mechanism is not in place. So the motions waiving fees for, for events occurring prior to July 1st are going to continue to get processed. The, the idea would be that after August 1st, then Street Services would be handling the application. So that's really all that 9B does.
That's right.
If, you know...
But it doesn't get through the concern of the loss of discretion?
No, no, it does not.
Now, how can we get to that point?
You mean to have a dialogue about it, to discuss it further? I don't have, I don't have a resolution for you at this point in time, other than the, if you will, the elimination of discretion, where the criteria that's specified in the ordinance is met. And that is where it's a...
Well, maybe the best way to, to phrase what I'm trying to get at, which is, is adhere to the fiscal responsibilities, but allow this discussion to get to another level of, of dialogue, if you will, so that we understand how we can create that delicate balance so we don't lose discretion. Is that a holding motion? Would that have to be a holding motion?
Well, no, I, I suppose it's possible to both adopt the ordinance and move item 9A to committee so that the committee reports back on any changes that, that are recommended to be made to address that.
So we support 9A there?
Proceedurally.
I'm sorry?
Proceedurally, it's possible to send 9A to committee and ask the committee to report back on recommendations to maximize discretion, if you will, by the, by the council offices.
We can phrase it that way, yeah, and still be adhering to our fiscal responsibilities.
If, if you do both, that is, adopt, adopt 9 and send A to committee and say, report back, that's, you know, I don't know, within a certain time, on ways to address that issue.
Okay. So I don't have to make any new verbal motions at this time, with 9A will take care of that?
No, it, that would be part of Mr. Parks' motion, which would be to refer 9A to committee and report back.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Jesus. Oh, man.
Mr. LeBange? And please, try to include at least a motion also.
I move the question.
Oh, all right. We had one speaker on the queue, but it is for a third time, so this only requires a simple majority. So is there any objection to moving the question? It's Ms. Hahn. Is there any objection to moving the question? Mr. LeBage, you're the last one on the queue. Since it's a third time, then it would be an eight-person vote. Is there any objection?
I guess there's a couple things Jerry said.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as a yes to objection, so we will, so we will vote on it. It's an eight-person vote.
I object.
Please open the roll on whether to call the question, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
There's five no's.
Okay, the question has not been called, so Ms. Hahn, as our last speaker, please go.
Okay, let me, again, there's just so much confusion. Jerry, you said that this ordinance says that when an applicant applies to Street Services, they will have to show that they have consulted with the council office. There is nothing in this ordinance that even comes close to that. The closest thing is that, once the application is made, Bureau of Street Services will notify the council office. There's nothing that says they have to have shown that they've consulted with the council office. And there's been, colleagues, you know, Pete, I, you know, love you dearly, but you've said a lot of things today that weren't exactly accurate. Jerry, you said things that are not accurate. I actually, contrary to what Greg says, I've read this ordinance. I know what it says, and there, there are problems. And Ed, I can, I can hear you saying, how do we get But these issues of how we get to where you want to get to, which is more discretion in the council office on making sure that the events that we do, the same with less in a more, you know...what's the word I'm looking for? In a more deliberate way, is what I'm asking the CLA to get us there. I know you've been working it eight years, but you've got to get us there a little bit closer, either by transferring that money to somewhere where we have more discretion over it, or figuring out this plan that just came out of nowhere of where we budget it quarterly. That came out of nowhere. That's nowhere in the ordinance. So let's send those things back, so we decide how we can get to where I think we all want to get to. We're doing more with less. We're doing the same with less. But we have no control in this ordinance. And, by the way, this ordinance says, even after you notify us, we can object, and the next sentence is, you'll let us know that the permit has been issued. Even if we object, it doesn't really matter. And I don't think, colleagues, we want to go forward. We're trying to figure out how to manage this budget in a better way. This does not do it, and Street Services is not ready to do it. Okay.
Need a 9C? Are you proposing a 9C?
A 9C? No, actually, I think Richard has proposed, and I seconded it, that we approve B and send the idea of this hundred thousand back to committee, so we can figure out how...a better way to where we get to legally, that we have more discretion.
9B does that, then?
No, 9B doesn't do that.
All right. Is there anybody else on the queue?
No, no. No, 9B just extends the moratorium. So Richard said, let's approve that, but send this whole idea of this hundred thousand back to committee, so we can get more discretion. That's all I'm asking. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you.
Anybody wish...okay. We now have before us, colleagues, a series of motions. Listen up, everybody, we got a series of motions. The last one to be made was Mr. Alacon's motion, which we will take up first, since we go in reverse order per council rules. We will...that motion, Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to state what that does.
The last motion made...
If I'd like to, I mean, please do.
By Mr. Alacon, seconded by Ms. Hahn, was to, one, approve 90, and to, two, send the entire matter, or send the rest of the matter back to committee.
That...that's what was stated. That's what we have before us, if there's any...okay. Everybody clear with that? Please.
Which, Mr. President, the city attorney reminded me, which does include sending the ordinance back to committee as well.
The ordinance would go back to committee as well, folks. It was the whole enchilada. Salsa verde included. All right. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
Okay. I think the rest of the motion will...are trumped by that, so...coming back to a place and a time. Oh, yes, we will. You will most certainly see it again. In fact, doing this ensures you will see this repeatedly again. All right, that is the order of this...Mr. Rosenthal, did you want to say something briefly on that item before you?
Let him come up. He's been waiting all day, so let him come up.
Okay, is 29 or 30? Which one was it?
Yeah, it's 29.
On 29, okay. You want staff to come up, Mr. Rosenthal? Okay. All right. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosenthal on item number 29.
Sure. Okay, 29 is a...and I want to thank staff for being here through all this other stuff, watching the democracy work, is a Michael Fuhr motion that talks about 20% water less usage by the year 2020. It's obviously a good thing, and we have to work in that direction. The questions are pretty simple, I have. What requirements does this build place on agricultural water users to reduce their water consumption? Does it mandate what kind of crops can be grown? Does it mandate what they line their canals to prevent seepage and evaporation? We both...we all know that farmers get water cheap, rightly so. We need to eat, and they grow our food. But those questions are important. One, is the kind of drainage, or tillage, or wasted water? And two is obviously the kind of crops that they grow. Do we have any thoughts on that in keeping with Mr. Fuhr's legislation?
Certainly. Rocky Opreto with the chief legislative analyst office. Actually, in the bill, it does have requirements in there, best management practices for agricultural suppliers and users of water. One of the requirements is that they actually take a look at alternative land uses, particularly for water that utilizes a lot of water. So that's one of the requirements. In addition to that, and one of the more mandated elements, is that with regard to pricing and so forth, that now water suppliers of agricultural users start applying volumetric pricing and so forth, which didn't have in place before. So that mandate is in there as well.
Yeah, and that's going to be the big challenge, because never before has anybody said to the farmers, whom we love and need, that you can't waste the water, number one, and you can't grow crops that make no sense in our arid areas here. Let them in the southeast part of the United States grow the rice, where they get tons of rain, not in the middle of that arid plain. So that's going to be the big challenge, is to talk to the farmers about what kind of crops make sense, and two, how they can conserve water rather than waste it. And the second issue is, would this bill allow for an urban water banking system that would allow new projects to purchase water conservation offsets? For example, by retrofitting a golf course or a school with high-efficiency irrigation, or by irrigating with reclaimed water? I mean, the big deal about development around this place is, we love to do what we need to do, but if we don't have water to sustain these development projects, we have to take a real hard look on what we do and what we don't do.
I believe that...
Your name for the record?
Susan German. I believe that there's already provisions in an existing statute where we do water supply assessments before a prospective customer comes to make sure that we can supply the water. But I don't...to specifically answer your question, I don't believe there's anything in the bill that speaks to your question.
Good. And Joe, you were nodding your head, and I know you were patiently waiting here.
Oh, no trouble. You guys gave us some cookies and things, so we're good. Any kind of development in the city of Los Angeles has to provide for two things. One, they have to pay for the infrastructure, and two, they have to demonstrate that there's sufficient water supplies to provide for that new development. So that's a city requirement. It's not in the bill, but that's a city requirement.
And assuming this bill passes, which would be wise for the legislature to do it, and it would be wise for the governor to sign it, how will that impact us here?
Well, actually, the bill allows a tremendous amount of flexibility for the city, local environments, to implement their water supply action plans in a manner that is consistent with our operational needs. So the good element is that it allows credit for what Department of Water Power has already done since the early '90s and so forth, and it should fit in nicely with the water shortage rates elements, as well as the Phase II, Phase III component as well.
Great. Well, thank you, the three of you, for presenting it. And, Mr. President, I ask my colleagues for an eye vote on this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosenthal, with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you. We can send 40 forthwith, please. Sorry, not forthwith, 40, if we can continue that till Friday, folks. Request to continue that till Friday. If there's no objection, we'll continue item 40 until Friday. And if we can move to suspend the rules on number 11, to send that immediately to the mayor, forthwith is usually at the end of the meeting, we'll cut a couple minutes off. Please open the roll on suspending the rules. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That suspension has occurred, and...okay, hold on one second. He's still here right now. Let's go ahead and send that then immediately to the mayor for his signature. Hold on, folks, we are awaiting confirmation of our quorum here. All right, we...quorum has been broken by Mr. Weisar, leaving without permission, so we're going to try to track him down. If we can just sit tight for a couple minutes. If not, we'll call this meeting over. Let's wait two minutes. Colleagues, both Mr. Weiss and Mr. Weisar did not get to sign off on leaving. We are unable to get either of them back, and based on that, we have lost quorum. The last two items will be carried over till Friday. We will not be meeting tomorrow. Our next meeting will be on Friday, June 19th. Until then, the city council is adjourned.
You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
It's safe to take anywhere you want to. But you have to keep in mind that many of the drugs that are over there...